Everybody.
Watch this move.
Magazines keep you busy.
Welcome, everyone, to our June twenty-third.
Recording in progress.
Study session. We have two agenda items on today's agenda. First, we have a presentation on our twenty-twenty-four year-end audit presentation, and then we will be looking at recommended twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven budget preview and presentation of recommended capital improvement plan and outside agency funding. So with that, I will ask Mr. Jason Boynton to come forward, and Mr. Brian Anderson will introduce our auditor, and we'll hear our audit presentation.
Yes, thank you, all the council members. I just wanted to take a quick moment before we introduce Jason to also thank our financial team. And with us today, we have Jill Harris, she's our accounting manager at the audit. Thank you. And also, too, there's Rachel Horek, she's our financial manager, and her team participates, obviously, and assists with the financial audit as well, too. So thank you for both of their assistance and leadership for putting together the twenty-twenty-four audit. With that, we have Jason Boynton, as you've said, too, from Smith Schaefer, who has done our audit for us. And with that, I'll ask him to step up and present the audit. And it should be noted, too, I think this is our fifty-third year. We actually recently received our Certificate of Achievement Award from the GFOA, so I think we're the longest-standing city in Minnesota to receive that. But I'm sure Jason will mention that, too. So, thank you.
Congratulations.
Well, good afternoon, Council President, council members, Ministers Elms. Pleased to be with you today to go over the results of the audit of the twenty-twenty-four financial statements. So the financial statements just got issued. They're hot off the press. That's the book here. As I've done in the past, I put together a PowerPoint presentation, a slide deck here of about fifty slides. Probably take me about a half an hour, maybe a little bit more, to kind of work through those. But let's keep it fairly informal. If you have questions, as I'm going through, just speak up and happy to address those. I think we'll also have time at the end for questions as well. So I'm going to use the PowerPoint as a guide.
I think if you point it towards the city clerk, it will work.
This way? Oh, there we go. Perfect. All right. So we're here today to talk about the audit. So Smith Schaefer performed the audit for the city's financial statements. What we do is we issue an opinion on the financial statements. That's our primary purpose. So we perform our accounting duties, and based on the work, we issue an unmodified opinion. A lot of people refer to that as a clean opinion. Just means that we think that the financial statements are fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Just a reminder that, Council, if this is a group audit, we call it, that means that we're not the only auditors involved in the financial statements of the city. The, you see those extract bullets there, the electric and water utilities at RPU, as well as the DMCC, which by accounting standards is required to be reported as a blended component unit. Those financial statements were audited by other auditors, and we rely on their opinion in issuing our overall unmodified opinion on the city's financial statements. That first section, the fourth bullet, we do participate in the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Program of the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association. As Brian mentioned, we did receive the twenty-twenty-three award, award for the twenty-twenty-three report, our fifty-third year in a row that we've received that. And we will submit the twenty-four report to that process as well, and we certainly anticipate that we will receive that award. That award goes to cities that go above and beyond the minimum reporting requirements for governments, provides more information in the financial statements for users, provides more transparency about the results and what's going on at the city. So that length of time receiving that award shows the city's long-term history of providing quality financial reporting. In addition to issuing an opinion on the financial statements, we're required to perform a special federal program audit we refer to as a single audit, and that's just procedures that we perform on federal dollars that we receive here at the city to make sure that we're meeting all the compliance requirements associated with federal awards. So that work will be performed in July. We'll issue the report on that prior to its due date in September. And lastly, I just wanted to thank the Audit Committee. We were able to meet last week, spend a little bit more time on the audit side, reviewing the results, as well as going over accounting standards, both current ones and future ones. And we reviewed the letter to those charged with governance and required communication to that group. So, again, thanks to those folks for their time and participating in that meeting. It's a quick summary of the audit. So what we like to do at this point, since we've just issued the financial statements, is take a look back at the kind of the highlights of the financials for twenty-twenty-four. So we've got a slide deck here, as I mentioned, of about fifty slides to review. We're going to cover, this is going to be, we're covering kind of really at a high level, at a ten-thousand-foot view of the financial information. But as I said, certainly as we go through, if you have questions, speak up, as well as if I mention a color of one of the charts and it doesn't match up, certainly let me know. The screen versus the printed copy sometimes is a little bit different. So we're going to cover governmental funds. So we're going to cover the general fund, certain special revenue funds, not all of them, some of them are relatively small. I will talk about our CIP fund, and then the debt service funds. Those are all considered governmental funds. And then we will touch on proprietary funds, the enterprise funds, which are utilities, parking, electric, water, sewer, and then internal service funds, which are internal vehicles that the city uses for these activities, for equipment revolving purchases, as well as self-insurance, employee benefits, and ITRF information technology. We're going to start out in the general fund. So the general fund, main operating fund for the city, all these charts that I'm going to go through in this section here are generally going to be pretty similar, the first bar in each year. So you get multiple years' worth of data. The first bar is going to be revenues, inflows, sources of funding. The second bar is going to be expenditures, outlays. And then the last bar will be the surplus or deficit if we add to our fund reserves, or if we use fund reserves in any particular year. Couple of the charts will add a fund balance column as well, or bar to the chart, too. So I'll point that out. So if we start out in the general fund in twenty-twenty-four, our total revenues for the year, we brought in one hundred and twenty million dollars. That's up the previous year by about eleven million dollars over the previous year. If you break that one hundred and twenty million down in that first bar, the purple represents property taxes. So that's our primary revenue source in the general fund. We had about sixty-nine million in property tax collections compared to sixty-three, so we're up about six million dollars. That's the main driver of the increase in revenues. We did increase the levy by nine percent, and so a lot of that is a result of that. The blue represents all other revenues besides payment in lieu of tax, which is the yellow at the top. That last bullet there covers the in lieu of tax payment summary, which is just under fifteen million dollars. And then the other revenues are going to be just a mix of license and permit revenue, fees for service, lodging tax, and a governmental LGA, investment income, all of those things. So the other revenues represent about thirty-six million. So that's the makeup, sixty-nine property taxes, thirty-six other, and then fifteen payment in lieu. Our expenses and transfers out totaled about one hundred and seventeen million for the year. That leaves a surplus then of about three-point-one million, which you can see in the first bullet there. So that added to our general fund reserves. We had an excess of three-point-one million increasing that fund balance.
Mr. Boynton, can you hold for a minute? Councilmember Palmer?
On this page, I got a couple of questions for you. We have a surplus of three million dollars, or three million dollars. That goes into where?
That goes into your general fund, unassigned fund balance.
Okay, and that increases our fund balance. So then I'm looking at the revenues are up by ten million dollars, and our expenses are up by five. And under the revenues increasing, the private tax revenue went up six million dollars. So if we would have taken, that's about three percent of our tax levy, if we would have taken less tax levy, we would just about break even in that category. Am I thinking right on that?
Yeah, I mean, if you'd set the levy at, say, sixty-six million, then we would have, you know, the fund balance wouldn't have changed at all.
But from a ten percent down to a seven percent increase last year, we would have saved that much money. I always figure it's about two percent per million.
Yeah, I mean, levy was, well, for the general fund, was seventy million, so.
Yeah. So the next question for you is, in lieu of taxes, we have all those numbers that are there. From other organizations, from standards that you have, are these typical standards, or is it high, is it low? What is your thought?
I would say that I have not done an analysis of that. Payment lieu is used, we do a lot of smaller city audits, and you don't see a lot of payment lieu in those smaller cities. It's the larger cities that have large utilities. So I don't know if any city staff have any thought on any comparisons there. Or we certainly could do that for you if that's something we could provide that information, but.
Well, I mean, if you look at parking at eight-hundred-and-sixteen, it would be nice to know, is that a good number, or is it a percentage from an enterprise fund? Should it be higher? Should it be lower? Should we lower our fees? Should we increase our fees? You know, I look at the stormwater at six-eighty-five. I mean, are we taxing people too much on stormwater? And should we kick that back to a lower amount, or should we be increased? I mean, those are our budget questions for me, that those are areas that, you know, if we're at average, then I would say we're okay. But if we need to look at those, I think those would be good to look at. We're also, I think, looking at doing a gas, natural gas in lieu of taxes, which would be another fund that we could tap. So I'm looking at something that we can do to not have an increase in our property tax.
Administrator Duzelms, did you have something to add?
Council President, and of course, this is a look backwards, but also the question would be, would all of the expenses happen the same way? We plan for the expenses that are anticipated, but sometimes, for example, the police department hasn't been fully staffed since before I arrived in Rochester. So had the police department been fully staffed, you may not be looking at this number. You may be looking at a deficit if you don't account for what you anticipate happening during the year. So just point that out. And I would just kind of echo what Mr. Boynton said. Realistically, when you're looking at these in lieu, you would want those to be in line with the size and scope of the operation that the in lieu is coming from. And so each is different, basically, because of the formulas for electric and water are very different than the formulas for parking, stormwater, and sewer. But we, when we get into the budget discussion, are looking at all of those in lieu funds and trying to make more alignment going forward. But typically, you would not want to not increase your property tax levy and utilize other funding sources that are really not intended to replace the levy. They're intended to operate within an accounting structure where you have special revenue funds, you have enterprise funds that are supposed to operate like a business, and that business is paying, if you will, for its impact to the levy for which it does not, it isn't taxed. The land that it sits on, the parking ramp sits on, is not contributing to the tax levy, but it is impacting the services that are paid for by the tax levy. So we can talk further about the intent of the governmental accounting system that we work under. But that would be why we look to balance our approach to how revenues come in, because there does need to be some relationship to why you are utilizing, like, what, how you're applying your in lieu fees, especially to maintain our bond rating.
My last question is, is the largest increase we have here is in general government, which, you know, that's two-point-two million dollars. We gave public safety, we gave quite a bit of a raise last year. And so that kind of surprised me, that general government went up that much, so.
Yeah, so we did look just quickly at that. The main drivers of, the concept of them is that if you had a private utility running in town, you would be bringing in, you know, tax revenues. But we don't have, we run the government ourselves, and so we're just trying to treat it like, you know, it was a private company that was doing that. So now, as for the actual formula amounts and the amounts that we're using to generate those dollars, that would have to be as part of the budget process to take a look at that.
Yeah, thank you.
So back to that. So we had a surplus then of about three-point-one million for the year. That added to our fund reserves within the general funds. On the next chart, what we're looking at here is your unassigned fund balance, represented in the green section there. The yellow is your total expenditure. So typically, we look at a metric of fund balance to the size of the government. We're using expenditures as the, as the metric to take a look at it. And the city policy then is not less than five months of expenditures, which is forty-two percent. And if you look historically, even though we saw increases every year in fund balance, we have been setting aside additional dollars. And even though we added three million dollars to general fund reserves this year, that still left our percentage at the same. So as the city grows, we're maintaining the same level on a percentage basis of our expenditures. That third bullet looks at the, a metric, if you said, well, instead of looking at twenty-four expenditures, what if it was twenty-five budget? And we spent all those dollars, that would actually bring the percentage down to about forty-three percent, which is still above our minimum policy, but it is a little bit closer, as Administrator Duzelms had mentioned, you know, and there's years where we don't spend all the money because we have open positions in police or fire or those types of things. One of the reasons we set that forty-two percent fund balance policy, only one of the reasons, but one of it is cash flow. So our funding through property taxes is a significant portion of the general fund revenue budget, only comes in in June and December. And so we have to fund all operations. So this chart just takes a look at your cash balances each month in the general fund, cash and investments. And you can see, we have to cover operating costs each month. And so that draws that balance down until those dollars come back in again in June, and then again in December. Now, that's one of the reasons. Obviously, there's other reasons that we set that forty-two percent for bond ratings and for emergency reserves and those types of things within the general fund.
Councilmember Miller?
Just one quick question to kind of follow up on Councilmember Palmer. Looking at the unassigned fund balance in twenty-twenty-five budget dollars, we could say that we are really optimizing for that percentage. I feel like the question was, how do we optimize the tax levy? But we're looking at this metric as our optimization for how to think about our twenty-twenty-five budget, and do we have the right fund balance for those fluctuations? And so I see this as a way of answering Councilmember Palmer's question, perhaps, is that we are working with a budget that is optimized, that's not taking more tax levy than necessary, but projecting forward for what we'll need to cover in the year. Is that fair?
All right, moving on from the general fund. So we have special revenue funds are listed here. As I mentioned, I don't have necessarily chart on every single one, but we're going to hit the major ones. We're going to start out in the library fund. So library in twenty-twenty-four, in the last set of columns there, revenue is about ten million dollars. That's made up of property tax levy in the light blue, and then county levy of one-point-two-five million that we get. So library predominantly tax-funded. We get a small amount of user fees in the green there, about four-hundred thousand dollars. And just to point out to council, in the third bullet there, just a reminder that the money that we get from the county for the library is assessed on properties outside of the city. So city taxpayers are not paying both city and county levy for the library. Expenditures this last year were about nine-point-eight million, so we had a surplus of about one-hundred-and-seventy-thousand in the library. That added to our fund balance. There is a fund balance column at the end there in the gray. That ended the year at three-point-six million, which is about thirty-seven percent of the expenditures in twenty-twenty-four. Next chart is municipal rec. So this covers all of the areas in that first bullet there, so recreation center, golf, tennis, pools, plumberhouse, and so on. So this is an aggregate of all those activities together. The funding sources there for the municipal rec, we brought in revenue of just under sixteen million dollars. About ten of that is tax levy. About five-point-five million is user fees. So certain activities we can charge for, other things within parking rec, we don't, and we fund those with property taxes. Our expenses and transfers out were about fifteen and a half million, so we had a surplus of four-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand across all the activities. That increased the fund balance, and that last bullet up to just over three million dollars, or about twenty-one percent of our expenditures. A little historical context here, if you look back, that fund balance column, which is in the light green or gray, we were at about three-point-six million in twenty-seventeen. And over the course of several years, we'd used reserves for capital projects within municipal rec and brought that fund balance level down to about one-point-eight million in twenty-twenty-one. You can see there, which is about fourteen percent of the expenditures in that year. But since then, we've been able to increase that, those reserves, I think intentionally, to bring that back up to a level at twenty-one percent. So we made up about seven percent over the last three years within municipal rec. My next chart takes a look at rec center operations. So this is part of municipal recs. We're drilling down into a couple of the departments within there, just to give you a flavor for what those activities are. So starting out with the rec center, funding sources, again, the light blue is property taxes, and the green are the user fees. So we brought in a little over one-point-seven million this year. Our expenditures actually came down a little bit at the rec center compared to the previous year at one-point-five million. So we had, I call it a surplus, but basically, it's property tax levy that we allocated toward rec center that wasn't needed this year, about two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars. So, and then when you compare, that first bullet just says, well, what are the actual costs that we aren't covering through the fees that we are able to charge at the facility? And so that was four-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand, which was better than the previous year, which was six-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand, as user charges were up and expenses were down. We look at Graham, it's similar, user fees there in the green. But then there's two funding sources to cover the difference. It's, the blue represents city property tax levy, and then the yellow, based on our agreement with the county for Graham Arena, the, any deficit between what we can charge for using the facilities versus our operating costs is shared fifty-fifty. So the county pays a portion of the shortfall from operations there. And so then you can see roughly, that's about the same. If the city allocates levy, that's the property tax levy based on the budget. But if it doesn't work out to be exactly that amount, it just comes either ads to or comes out of our fund reserves within the municipal rec system. Golf, if you look at golf, the last, or for twenty-twenty-four, revenues were about two million dollars. Again, there's a little bit of property tax levy, which is actually down from the previous year. We levied two-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand roughly in twenty-twenty-three. That was dropped to eighty-three thousand in twenty-twenty-four. But revenues continue to increase as we did raise rates in twenty-three and twenty-four. So we generated additional dollars from the users of the golf operations. But expenditures were up this year at a larger clip. So we actually ended up with a small deficit, which means we didn't allocate enough property tax levy in this particular year to cover all the expenses. And last, in municipal rec is park and park, forestry and parkway maintenance. So here, obviously, we, the green is the user fees. We don't get a lot of user fees for using our park system. We get some, about a half a million dollars. But it's primarily funded through property taxes. So we did increase the amount of property taxes levied for parks, up to eight-point-three million. Our expenditures came in at seven-point-six million. We're under budget on the expenditure side, and therefore, we, our levy, we didn't need about one-point-two million this year. So that went into reserves within the municipal rec system. So actually, the overall rec system went up about a half a million dollars. Most of that came probably from our unused budget within parks. Moving on from municipal rec, take a look at the airport here. The first chart just takes a look at revenues generated out at the airport. So there's four categories there. The red represents commissions, the yellow is land and building rents, and then there's landing fees in the green. So historically, obviously, the trend changed in twenty-twenty with the pandemic, it's impacted there. So commission revenues dropped, as passenger traffic dropped. We've gotten revenues back to, almost back to the level, but passenger traffic is not at the level we were in twenty-eighteen and twenty-nineteen. But we've gotten the revenues back. We have two-point-three-five million in commissions. Commissions generally come from parking lot, fees, car rentals, and then from the FBO. The yellow is land and building rents for the terminal, as well as other properties around the airport. The green is landing fees. We actually did see an increase, a pretty significant increase this past year, as we instituted a new general aviation landing fee. So that drove some more revenue to the airport. And then the blue is other income, which historically, prior to twenty-twenty, was around a half million dollars of other sources. That increased to about a million and a half the last several years, and that's the result, that second to last bullet there talks about federal dollars that we got after the pandemic and the CARES Act. We've gotten a little over a million dollars each year to help support operations at the airport. And I believe there's one more year left on that funding commitment. So.
So Mr. Boynton, on that, with, with the end of the CARES funds, will that other income drop by roughly?
Million dollars.
Okay.
So that's the revenues overall for the airports, so the overall fund operations. So we include, in addition to that, those are the revenues generated at the airport. We also have property tax levy that we do there for utilities and customs, as well as some other revenue, like investment income on the reserves and so on. So total, we brought in seven-point-seven-five million, including all those items. Our expenditures were at six-point-one million. We had a surplus of one-point-six million at the airport. So to your point, Council President, if we did not have that a million dollars of CARES dollars, we would have had a surplus of about six-hundred-thousand in the fund for the year. That surplus then, on their fund balance, added to their fund balance, we have about thirteen-point-seven million dollars at the end of twenty-twenty-four compared to twelve-point-one million. And these are dollars, airport, transit, they're setting aside funds for capital. These are pretty capital-intensive activities. And even though in both cases, those cases, they're heavily funded through federal and state grants, there still is a local share or a local match on these projects, and that's what these dollars would be available for. Transit is our next chart. So revenues overall for transit were about fifteen million dollars. As I said, mainly through federal and state grant funding. So about eighty-seven percent of the funding in twenty-twenty-four came from federal and state grant dollars. We have about a million and a half in ridership fees, so that's about ten percent. And then a little bit of other income makes the difference. Expenditures, roughly about fourteen-point-five million, so we had a surplus this year for five-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand in the transit fund. So that added to our fund balance. It went from four-point-seven up to five-point-three million. And again, those are reserves for future capital. The other thing you should point out is, from a tax levy standpoint, well, the last nine years, none of the tax levy has gone to support the transit operations. It's all been funded through federal and state grants. We did have a small levy. You can see a little bit of blue in that twenty-fifteen year. That was the last time we had property tax levy going toward transit. And the last special revenue fund I've got is the Bioscience Center. So this chart covers the operations for just floors four through eight, which are, we call non-TIF, or tax increment financed. So we bring in rental revenue there, about two-point-six million dollars. Our operating cost for operating that was, the facility is a million and a half, and then we transfer about nine-hundred-and-thirty thousand for debt service on the bonds that we used to construct the Bioscience Center. Just an outlier there in twenty-twenty-one, that other, or transfer in came from parking, and that related to the sale of the duly space. So we've had a one-point-four million that came in there. Next, we're going to quickly go through our outstanding bonds from the governmental standpoint. This does not include the utilities. The first one in chart twenty-one is EDA lease revenue bonds. So the initial bonds were used to construct the Bioscience Center for those upper floors. We're paying those back with the rents over time. And then in twenty-twenty, we added the bonds for the construction of the Development Services Infrastructure Center in the North Precinct. And so combination, we owe still twenty-four million on both of those bond issues in total, about seven million in Bioscience, and about seventeen million in North Precinct and DSIC. We have also issued a tax increment bond for the TIF portion of the Bioscience Center. That's this one. It had an ending balance of three-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand at the end of the year, and that'll be paid off in twenty-twenty-five. In twenty-seventeen, we issued a TIF bond for assistance in construction of parking ramp number six. We owe about sixteen-point-six million at the end of twenty-twenty-four. We're paying that back with a combination of parking revenues or transfers from parking, as well as tax increment revenues. In twenty-ten, we issued the building, taxable Build America Bonds to construct the Public Works Ops Center, the Transit Ops Center. We did a refunding in twenty-twenty, and we owe about fourteen-point-one million left on those bonds. We issued lodging tax revenue bonds in twenty-fifteen for construction of the Civic Center Expansion. We issued forty-three million in bonds. We owe about thirty million. We're paying that back with collections from the lodging tax. Sales tax revenue bonds were issued in our last sales tax authorization in twenty-fifteen. Proceeds to be used for those items in the bullet there. Stadium is not the current stadium project we've been talking about. It had to do with the RCTC Stadium. We owe ten million dollars at the end of twenty-twenty-four, and I think those were paid off in twenty-twenty-five. And last, in the bonds area, we've, the two new issues we had the last two years were tax abatement bonds. The twenty-three bonds were issued for improvements, parking, rec improvements, the Soldier Field pools, Silver Lake. pools, Silver Lake Park. Those funds are going to be repaid then with a portion of that park and rec referendum, the additional 2 million that we did. And then the abatement bonds that we issued, 11.4 million in '24 was for HVAC improvements. So the geothermal that we did at City Hall, library, civic center, and art center, and those are going to be repaid with property tax levy, probably savings on the cost of the improvements as well. And lastly, on the debt side, this isn't a bond per se, this is a net pension liability. So accounting standards require that cities report their share of any underfunding on a plan that they participate in. So city participates in PERA, the state plan. And so we have to record our pro-rata share of what their actuaries determined as of June 30, '24, they were underfunded, which was 55 million dollars. So, and they've, they've done some assumption changes over the years, which definitely has impacted the actuarial valuation. You can see the liability has changed dramatically in some years, as well as market performance has, can have an impact on that. But that last bullet there talks about what their last study, they say they were funded at roughly about 90% for the General Employee Fund and the Police and Fire Fund, which I think, relative to other governments, is considered to be a relatively healthy funding level. All right, switching gears to capital projects. So I just have one chart here on capital projects, and this just shows the fund balance for the CIP fund. Now, the CIP fund is made up of a lot of different projects, and we aggregate them all for reporting purposes into one fund. We ended the year with a fund balance of 311 million dollars. These are funds that we have on hand at the end of '24 that we haven't spent, obviously. The bullets there kind of list the major buckets that those are broken down into to give you a feel for where those dollars are planned to be used for. We did see an increase this last year from 253 to 311 million. The largest increase came in the DMCC, the last bullet there. It's that increased by about 30 million, a little over 30 million dollars. So these are funds that we get from the state that have not been spent yet toward the DMCC initiative. So that was the largest increase there. We did see increases in a couple of other areas, highways and streets, infrastructure sales tax. We actually saw a decrease in park and rec as we spent out the bond proceeds associated with those park and rec improvement projects that we did in 2024. We'll move on to enterprise fund. We'll start out in parking. Parking revenues were about, just a little under $9 million this past year. Expenses were slightly more than that, so we had a small deficit of $58,000 in parking. If you compare that to the last two years, it looks like we're, we're down, but there was a couple of one-time items I point out in 2022. That blue, the other income at the top, we got a $2 million settlement on ramp six. So that's not really operating revenues. So if you factored that out, we'd probably have been closer to break even there, and we ran a little higher deficit in 2023 if it weren't for, we got a federal grant for the construction of the 75th Street Park and Ride. So we got about $2 million there as well. So if you look back historically in parking, you know, we generated enough revenue to cover our operating costs, and then we added debt service with the ramp six construction, which is, the yellow represents transfers primarily for debt service. Then the pandemic hit. You can see the revenues dropped in 2020, came back a little bit in '21 and '22. So obviously, the impact of remote work had an impact on our parking revenues there. Operating costs continued to increase, although our revenues are back to where they were pre-pandemic levels, but we're essentially at a break even level, although I think we just completed a rate study in 2024 to help assist the city in kind of dealing with the new environment within parking going forward. Electric utility at RPU, revenues exceeded expenditures by about 35.6 million dollars compared to 30.5. They did a rate increase of about 3.2%, which drove a lot of that, the increase in the revenues. They are setting aside resources. We'll look at that in a second for, for capital needs. Just to point out as well that they are servicing debt, they have about 140 million dollars in that last bullet there in outstanding bonds associated with capital activity at the electric utility. Water utility, they also generated a surplus of about 3.6 million dollars, up from 2.9. They had a rate increase of about 5.5%, which drove most of that increase there. And then if we look at their reserves, their cash reserves, the green represents unrestricted cash investments, the yellow is your, again, your expenses and transfers out for payment in lieu. So they have about 146 million on hand at the end of the year. That's made up of 130 million for electric, about 16 million for water. That's about 80% of the expenditures. You can see they've made a concerted effort to build up those reserves. They were running at 30% back in the 2015 timeframe, but it looks like they're setting aside dollars as part of their power supply resource plan as the SIMPA contract comes to close in 2030. And I think they're projecting that they have significant capital needs moving forward, primarily in the electric side. Sewer utility, their revenues through fees was about 35 million. Expenses were about just under 20 million. So we did generate a surplus within the sewer. Just point out that the, the last time we did a major construction, we incurred some debt, and we've been paying that off over time. So our interest cost, our borrowing cost has come down pretty dramatically, which has lowered our expenses over the years. But now I think we are looking at additional capital investment there. I think there's a project right now ongoing that's about a $90 million project, and we're issuing, we got a PFA note for about 72 million towards that, and then obviously some can come from reserves. If you look at their cash reserves, they ended the year at 57.5 million. But again, I think when you look at electric and sewer, these are all capital intensive activities, and they require a lot of dollars to fund their improvements. And that debt, that PFA note that we did get, we, we are just starting to draw on that. So we'd only drawn about $10 million of that 72 million note as of the end of the year. Stormwater, we did not have a rate change there, so revenues are actually pretty similar year on year. Expenses were up. We did generate a surplus, although lower than the previous year, of about 2.4 million within stormwater. And if you look at their reserves, they have about 32 million in unrestricted cash investments. It's actually about the same as the previous year. So even though we had a surplus from an income statement perspective, we did spend in 2024 a little over $4 million in capital. So our cash balances stayed roughly the same. Last fund charts, we're going to look at our internal service. The first one deals with equipment revolving. So again, we're using this to help stabilize and balance budgets within the general fund so you don't have to budget for large equipment purchases in particular years. It spreads that cost out over time. So the departmental charges that go into the fund are in the yellow. That was about 4.1 million this year, and our equipment that we purchased this year was roughly a little under 2.8 million dollars. If you look at the last five years there, the department charges exceeded our equipment acquisitions in each year, adding to our fund reserves within. Compare that to the first five years, primarily the first three, where we had outlaid a lot more equipment than, than the dollars that were coming in. So we drew our fund balance down, our reserves, and we're trying to build that back up, as well as we're also trying to deal with the cost of replacement being significantly higher than, you know, what they were originally and based on the charges that we had done previously. So an effort to build that as well with the fees that we're charging to the departments. ITRF or Information Technology, we charged departments 3.2 million and we spent about 2.3, so we did add to our reserves there as well. And this is their unrestricted net position at the end of the year. So I mentioned that equipment revolving, we had brought that fund balance down. In the 2017 year, we were at 3.2 million dollars. We built it up to 11.2 at the end of 2024. ITRF, they had a $700,000 increase up to 8.2 million dollars. Self-insurance funds, so city self-insurers for their medical and dental benefits for their employees with some stop-loss coverage, as well as work comp and property loss. Chart here, you've got just the orange and the yellow are basically operating income, net income in each year. The dark green colors are cash and investments, reserves, and then the blue represents net position. If you look at 2024, we had 36 million in cash reserves, but our net position was about 13 million. Well, the difference there is that we've recorded liabilities for OPEB, which is other post-employment benefits. So there's an estimate of what we have to pay out in the future compared to what we brought back into today's dollars, as well as accrued claims for, for medical benefits. So that's the difference between the two. The OPEB, we've been bringing that on, which is why you saw that net position decrease. Accounting standards had us bringing that. We didn't have it recorded many years ago at all. They said, well, bring it on slowly over years. So we're bringing, bringing that down. And then in '23, we actually had a change in the estimate we had for accrued claims, which was a paper adjustment, but that contributed to a significant portion of that deficit that we incurred in 2023. But we did have a surplus this year, which added to those fund reserves. Our cash reserves went from 33 million up to 36 billion. And just for reference, our total claims that we paid out of the fund were about just under 30 million dollars for the year. So we got a little over a year's worth of reserve within the self-insurance fund. And if you look at the departmental charges in the yellow there compared to the benefit expense or the claims, again, that excess benefits also included a paper charge related to the adjustment in the claim liability, accrued claim liability. But for 2024, we had a surplus of 3.6 million dollars between our charges and our benefits paid out. So that's kind of the funds that we were going to cover today. I've got a few more charts here. Take a look at governmental fund revenues and expenditures in total, and then we will wrap things up and take additional questions if we have them. So this first chart just takes a look at taxable market value. Sets the stage for, we're looking at the city, Rochester's a growing community, we're growing in population, we're growing in housing and commercial. And so this is just reflective of that, and just keep that in mind as we're looking through the trends in revenues and expenditures too. But we ended the year at 18.3 billion in taxable market value. Just for comparison, we were under 10 billion back in 2016. If we look at revenues then for governmental funds, we talked about property tax levy. So this includes levy that gets allocated to all the funds. So this is the aggregate of the total. So we are at about $100 million, up about, with a 9% levy increase up from the 92 million the year before. That money, that levy also includes the $2 million park and rec referendum. Tax increment is the next category. It's only about $10 million, but it is up the last few years as we've had more TIF-related development. Non-property and sales tax, that's going to be 36 million dollars, about the same as the year before. Sales tax represents 24 million of that, 12 million we get through the lodging tax. LGA, local government aid, so this is aid from the state for operations. We actually had an increase in 2024 compared to '23, but historically, if you look back, we're, we're not getting even at the level we were getting in 2020, or 2015, excuse me. And then in lieu of tax payments were 14.8 million. We talked about those when we were the general fund. Other categories, we have charges for services, so these are the fees that we can charge at all the different departments. We brought in 17 million in revenue there. There was a change in 2020. Well, two things, I guess the pandemic had an impact in this area, as well as we changed how we are accounting for the Civic Center. We used to account for all the revenue and expenses of the Civic Center as the city operated it, and now we contract out with Experience Rochester. So the revenues dropped, and then when we get to the expenses, you'll see those dropped as well. Federal, state, county, local, this is all other revenues that we get, not LGA. So this year, saw a sizable increase, but that was driven by the DMCC money we got from the state, as well as, for the last several years, we've had the runway project going on at the airport. We had, we got some public safety aid in the previous year, DMCC activity. We got ARPA money back in '21. So those are all aggregated in there. Investment income, rates have been higher for longer here, so we've been able to generate some return. This also includes fair market value adjustments for the securities that we are holding, but we generate about 13 million each year the last couple of years, and then other revenues of 17.6 million. It's going to be like license and permit revenue, rents from the Bioscience Center that we talked about, assessments and other miscellaneous revenue. On the expenditure side, we spent 20 million in general government. Police was about 38 million, fire 22 million, other public safety, which is building safety, flood control, just about 7 million. So if you add all those three categories together, we spent about 67 million dollars in the public safety area. Airport was 6.2 million and transit 14 million in 2024. Park and rec, we spent about 15 million. Again, there's that drop in the expenditures I mentioned earlier with the changeover and how we were accounting for the Civic Center operations, as well as the pandemic, I'm sure had an impact in that particular year. Culture, which is primarily the library, spent a little over 11 million. Economic development, tourism, 10 million for 2024. We did see an increase in 2017. That was related to DMCC, and then in '21, when we switched over the way we were accounting for the Civic Center. Public works, so 17 million in just our general public works activities, and the community reinvestment allocated was just a little over a million dollars. The spike in 2020 was CARES funding that we distributed out to the community. Chart 51, so we talked, I talked about how Rochester's growing community. And so what we attempted to do with our tax levy here and to some extent LGA, although it's a relatively small amount, is to take a look at what that is relatively speaking, how compared to today, to some adjusted numbers from the prior year for population growth as well as inflation. So basically, if you took the 2024 tax levy collections, as well as the LGA and divided by the population, that would be the amount, $800 per person in property taxes. And then what we did is took all the previous years and we adjusted it for the CPI, using the CPI for inflation. So if I look back historically, we saw an increase on adjusted basis from 2015 through 2020 for property taxes per capita. Really looking at a growing community, adding services, not getting, you saw the LGA was flat, actually coming down, so not getting additional state aid, so the property tax levy had to bear a lot of that increase. In '21, because of the pandemic, we, the council left the levy, I think, the same.
It was a 0%. So actually, it reduced the amount of tax levy that you were taking in, which impacted all of the next budgets.
And so you see that number drop in 2021 as population, and primarily this was an inflationary time too as well, so adjusting for that. And in 2024, I think we're back to, you know, roughly about $800 property tax and $40 LGA per capita, which is on an inflation-adjusted basis, pretty similar to where we are at, even actually a little bit lower than we were in 2020. Last couple of charts, so accounting standards required us to go to full accrual for all activities. We do full accrual normally for the utilities, but for the fund levels, we use fund basis accounting. They required us to go to full accrual, which means depreciation, interest on the bonds, debt service, and so on. And so there's a schedule in the report here, and it's relatively small, and it's not important that you can necessarily read it all, but the concept is, is that you have expenses including depreciation in the first column. You have program revenues, so these are things that we can actually charge directly for those services in that area. So park and rec, for example, can charge fees in certain areas for what the services are providing, as well as it includes operating grants and donations and capital grants for specific purposes that are solely for those activities. Comes to a net cost in like the third to last column for governmental, and basically we fund those net costs with general revenues, which is going to be property taxes, LGA, sales tax, and so on. And my last chart then just takes a look at the last five years comparison. And I, I think what I take away here is if you look at departments like transit and airport where they get funding from, from other areas, federal and state, it's not actually a drawing upon those general revenues, property taxes, as I pointed out when we looked at those slides. Economic development is different because DMCC, we're getting state money in there, but we're capitalizing those costs as we incur those. But then you get to the last five areas, and these are areas that use general revenues like property taxes, with the most significant one being the public safety area, and that's funded primarily through property taxes. LGA, investment income, all those, other general revenues. So quick summary, focused primarily on fund balances. So general fund, so we ended the year at 48% of '24 expenditures, 43% of our budgeted 25 expenditures. Both numbers exceed our city policy of not less than 42%. Libraries at 37%. Municipal rec, we've been able to increase that the last few years up to 21%. Airport and transit, both have fund balances, 13.7 and 5.3 million respectively. Those are available for capital, local match for those capital purchases. CIP are dollars that we have on hand for future capital, 311 million dollars. We looked at kind of the breakdown of where those dollars, significant a majority of those are toward the DMCC initiative. Parking, evaluating what's going on with parking, but we do have 18 million dollars in cash reserves within the parking. Electric and sewer, they're servicing their outstanding bonds and they're operating Electric and sewer, they're servicing their outstanding bonds and their operating costs and building up reserves. Electric is continued to build reserves in anticipation of the changeover in the contract. And then self insurance, we saw an increase up to thirty six million dollars in cash reserves. A little over a two point eight million dollar increase and same with the equipment revolving increase from ten point four million up to eleven point three. So. So I gave you a lot of information in a short amount of time. Happy to take any questions. Covered a lot going on at the city at a high level, but.
Council member Wall.
Thank you. As I both reviewed beforehand and listened to you, it seems to me you could disabuse me of my notion that Rochester is in a really good position, well run, good fund balances. Could you compare us, kind of get into Palmer's question, could you, how do we rank? Say again, say a Byron much smaller or a Minneapolis much bigger or a Duluth more common to us? Are we in great shape?
So my in working with the city for quite a few years, my impression, it's just opinion, this is kind of going on what auditors typically do. But I'll give you my opinion is that 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 we have a good group of people that are good at planning out what they need for resources. So we don't have surprises. We don't run into problems. We regularly set aside resources. We do planning. We're budgeting out multiple years. And so as I go through it outside of some environmental problem or not problems, but environmental changes, say with like parking and we're trying to evaluate, you know, what how do we handle parking going forward? But all the other funds seem to be in solid shape.
Thank you.
Council member Miller.
Thank you for the presentation. I want to pick up on council member Palmer's question from earlier about the in lieu of tax and specifically looking at slide forty seven. Perhaps the trend is just suppressed by the difference in totals, but see property tax rising. See LGA flat to decreasing. That's been a legislative priority of ours to work with the state legislature. I see the in lieu of tax slightly increased. Is that trend just suppressed? Or how might that be coupled or decoupled from what it's supposed to be was in lieu of paying property tax, which the levy has been increasing?
That's a good question. I don't necessarily have the answer for that. The in lieu of tax, my understanding is it's formula driven based on, is it revenue growth?
Council, council president, council member, Mr. Boynton, you're correct in depending on the formula. So there is even a regression applied to the formula for electric and water. So they are very revenue driven, but it's net revenue and and there was used to be some caveats about when they're except they don't have an increase if there's no rate adjustment. So I think it's something that we need to be looking at longer term. I don't think that it's something that we should rely on. That was frowned upon in the financial and accounting community. But understand what are is the relationship of the of the formula to the fund. Obviously, you saw a slide where the parking fund actually was negative. So if you're increasing that and we don't have the revenue to pay the payment in lieu of tax, like that's a problem for the parking fund because then you're just sort of robbing Peter to pay Paul. And you end up needing to subsidize the parking fund with property tax. So each is slightly different. Whether you're talking about, I would argue, you would want to be distinct in in how are they actually impacting what otherwise either might be generating property tax? And how is the operation utilizing the other services that are paid for in large part by property tax, police, fire, et cetera? There was a recent response to a facility owned by Rochester Public Utilities that, you know, needed to have coverage, just like anyone else would have coverage for whatever their large investments are for police and fire to show up. And so there's that side of it. The other thing that we are looking at as we come to you with the budget is there's the payment in lieu of tax, but then there's also the services within the general fund and other fund, you know, primarily the general fund that we're providing that otherwise, if this was a standalone utility, would be overhead on their part. Things like the finance department, that is not a hundred percent true for the electric utility because they've built out a lot of their different systems, but not HR. So it's really looking at like, I don't know, decades of history and how we had been accounting for things, which is a reasonable way to account for them. And then going forward, understanding as organizational practices have changed across all industries to be less siloed and more of a matrix or sort of a shared services approach, even all of the IT world and software is software as a service now. It's like you don't buy it and put it on your computer. You live in the cloud with a bunch of other people. So we've had changes like that also. And so then how you actually adjust for that, recognizing all of these departments are trying to be planful and figure out what they need to be prepared for going forward. It takes time to bake that in. And it also is sort of an adaptive challenge where there's a lot of feelings about how things have been done before. And when you move someone's cheese, their cheese moves.
And I guess as a follow up question, the other slide I find very striking is thirty five, which is the electric water utilities, RPU. And there's the yellow portion, operating expenses and transfers out or pilot. Can you talk about like what's driving that? Obviously, I know it's a very capital intensive operation. Good to see unrestricted cash investments going up, but it seems like that operating expenses of pilot is just trending very specifically. And I'm curious, is that a decrease in operating expenses? Is that a decrease relative to charge for service in the pilot? Or how should we understand that graph?
Can I just clarify? So that top line is the total.
Yep.
So the expenses are actually increasing. They were.
The expenses are increasing.
Yeah, the the yellow just it's it's like a layered graph.
Can you clarify what page we're on?
Thirty five. And so the unrestricted cash as a percent is increasing.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. So we're at eighty percent at the end of the year compared to thirty, but that was from my understanding and you know, probably talking about the RPU. They could speak better to it, but the building cash reserves, anticipation of a lot of capital needs coming out of the M SIPA contract.
Yeah, they have upwards of one point two billion dollars of capital needs coming forward, just on the electric side.
Okay, just trying to understand the graph. Thank you.
Yeah, it's that's not the they're not stacked on each other. They're kind of layered. I apologize for the confusion.
No, it's okay. Thank you. A different question. So I see I think about recent changes. So parking had a rate study changed roughly break even as of the end of last year. And then golf had a funding stability change where there was, you know, property tax increase and fees. But it looks like on the golf side that the revenue increases are not keeping up with expenses. Is that an area that we would look at again? I feel like if I'm remembering correctly, there were some initial increases and then they stabilized at much lower rates. But it looks like perhaps the expenditures are increasing, particularly last year, much faster.
Yeah, so they were over budgeted in expenditures for the year. So I spent more than they initially had planned, which is the budget was used to set the amount of property tax levy allocated there. Just a quick look at the expenses. There were changes in employees that impacted that as well as they think they implemented a new software product.
Yeah, I think that maybe the simple answer is I don't think that we anticipate that to be an ongoing issue, but it's something that I know that Mr. Woodman monitors very closely. It is near and dear to his heart and the ability to understand whether the changes that we made are working. But I I think when you get the twenty twenty five report, when we're we're only not even quite halfway there yet. But you may see something different. There's also a lot of seasonality and weather really has a lot of impacts for golf. So hopefully we keep getting crowds like like last Thursday.
I was gonna say it looks like rain this week.
Yes, we are not generating revenue at the golf course this week.
Council member Palmer. If I read that right, and golf was an eighty three thousand dollars of of property tax, wasn't that what we put in last year?
That's all we allocated in twenty four, correct?
Okay. Couple of questions and I'm going to go off a kind of a the bond question. Rural thumb bonding wise, my understanding is that the city of Rochester really doesn't bond for very much. There's a percentage that you could hit that we are way below that. Am I saying that correctly?
Well, there's a legal debt margin, if that's what you're referring to. There's two percent of your market value and but only certain bonds count toward that. So it's really not an issue. If you have any revenue associated outside revenue besides property taxes associated with bond, you don't count it toward that.
But a lot of cities have a lot more bonding than we do.
On a percentage basis, for sure, yes.
Okay. And you said the bio business center will be paid off this next year or this year.
A portion of it, the TIF portion will be.
The TIF portion.
The non TIF portion still scheduled.
Then we'll start getting property tax payment on that full. Is that what you're trying to?
Yeah, depending when we decertify the TIF district, those property taxes then will come to the city through their general revenues and through their general property tax levy.
Okay. And then if I remember correctly off your slides, the taxable market value went up three point four percent. If you wanted to kind of stay the same, you could take your your budget and increase it by three point four and you kind of would stay the same as a simple math, what that means?
I would maybe answer that no, because you wouldn't be able to meet your labor agreements and so you would be cutting services.
So I mean, you said your levy is spread across the taxable market value of the properties.
Yeah. So in theory, that would be a good. Thank you.
I have a question on the airport fund, operating revenues. So my understanding, we have one more year of CARES dollars coming in at a million. My question is, how are we at the airport kind of looking to the future as far as filling that gap?
Council president, if you look at that, I don't remember what chart that was, but if you look back before CARES, we would be going back to the what we were bringing in in twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen. But we are trying to also enhance all the revenue opportunities. So every time a contract comes up for renewal, we're looking at, you know, adjusting to current market value or engaging in conversations about whether there's interest in locating at the airport, although you're locating on city owned land that has a lot of federal regulations. If you're located at the airport, working to the this body acted to provide airport development fund to try to attract additional leisure flights. We mostly are a business travel airport, but trying to add direct routes for low cost leisure carriers. So every every day we are looking at opportunities. There's really a three legged stool at the airport. We have cargo, which is critical. We have commercial, which is critical. And we have general aviation, which is also critical. But the most critical of those is commercial because that's really tied to almost all of your federal funding and being able to do the amount of projects. We're really getting ahead of the game with the amount of infrastructure investment that's happened in the meat and potatoes of how an airport works over the last five years with the runway extension, which never ending runway extension, that's that's happening, the approval last week of the grant for the general aviation apron maintenance, which opens up a lot of different experience for the general aviation traveler and then continuing to make sure that we keep a direct flight for cargo. And that expands beyond the airport because if you order anything online, although we still want you to shop local, there is a very quick turnaround time for people in Rochester because of all the other cargo that happens out of the airport.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Boynton? Thank you very much. Very comprehensive and we'll look forward to seeing you next year.
All right. Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody.
We will now move on to budget and Ms. Elms, are you going to present from there or from the podium? There she goes.
Myself, Deputy Administrator Parrish. So you'll have two different voices. I did just want to add one other thing. You each should have a an audit that's in your the full audit. This was not even the full audit, even though it's very comprehensive. That book that council president is holding up, I would, like many things, I would start at the back first. There's a statistical section. I think it starts on page one hundred thirty one, one hundred sixty one. One of those rings a bell to me. And that really shows you the ten year history of a lot of different things for the financial readiness of the city and sort of the economic status. So if you're new to the audit, I would recommend starting at the end before you look at actually what happened last year. I think it gives you a lot of perspective. So just a tip. So now we are going to talk about the recommended twenty twenty six, twenty seven budget review. So really talking about capital improvement plan and outside agency funding. This is not your entire recommended budget. It's a continuation as we're still finalizing the budget book, which is much larger than the audit that you received and is actually two books when you count the operating and the capital. So it is light reading. Thought we were already on this slide. And this is the first appearance of your updated community vision as well as the foundational principles and strategic priorities. I promise you that it will get prettier. And these are in, you know, no importance of order under the strategic priorities. It's just to be able to fit this on a slide that no one can barely read. So did just want you to know that we are taking these into account. We've started incorporating it into some of our conversations. So congratulations on adopting that and thank you for the work to move it forward. It is important for how we build the budget and live in our budget throughout the year. And now I can't click. Despite pointing it at you. There we go. So the focus for today, again, brief update on the twenty six, twenty seven recommended budget. So really going over at a very high level, what you already talked about in April, just as a reminder, the capital improvement plan, which Deputy Administrator Parrish will talk to you about. And then hopefully, well, we may have healthy discussion on the outside agencies, but we started that process much earlier this year. So wanted to be able to get some feedback from all of you as we finalize the recommended budget. So be thinking about what questions you might have on the capital budget, things that you might want to see, areas you want to see us focus in more as we move into the more details of the budget. Once we've finalized all of the numbers and crossed our Ts and dotted our Is. And then is there any of that preliminary feedback on the outside agencies? So as a reminder, we are in June and we have a long way to go. So thank you for for hearing me out one more time about the budget, my favorite subject. So you've seen this slide before. I just wanted to remind folks that as we're navigating, we have this, you know, I think it was helpful to have, I hope it was helpful to have what happened last year in front of you because we take into account all of those things. We look through, you know, what are the needs that are being brought forward? Some might say them see them as once, but when you really talk to the departments, there there is a rationale for every one of these requests that they have for changing, adding to or adjusting services. This four point two million dollar number is the entire budget. So you saw general government, you saw library parks and the enterprise funds. This is across the entire budget, less Rochester Public Utilities. And it's not uncommon for there to, you know, folks are really trying to plan ahead. And so much like when we go to the legislature, sometimes you have to ask more than once in order to be able to accomplish your goals. And then applying those strategic priorities, that's how this process whittles down into what is the recommendation? And then focusing in a little bit more on your priorities as to whether you think that's reasonable or not. I do want to again reiterate that we looked at it in that way by trying to make sure that we take into account how how is your actual budget living? Like, how are you living within the budget that's allocated? Are there changes that you can make? That comes at the baseline level. So that's outside of the decision packages. There could have, if someone comes up with an idea to change how they're providing service in their baseline that could accommodate a decision package, you know, there's two levers happening within the budget. Sometimes there's adjustments, sometimes we call them reductions that are happening, that could make room for something that's more important in today's day and age. And then, of course, we are always looking backward at our former tax rates. And unfortunately, we never get like the actual number until September, despite there being multiple stories in the newspaper about what's happening within tax appeals, et cetera, and growth within the marketplace. So you can see probably a different visual representation from what you saw in the audit conversation. But we are trying to, much to council member Palmer's point, stay within a certain amount of the net tax capacity. So when we talk about the estimated market value, that's part of what makes up this net tax capacity. And you can see in those years where we were after the zero levy year, it it's it's challenging to stay below the prior historical average when we're trying to build back services on a levy that actually brought in fewer dollars that year. And so I think we're finally making it there. So we're back in twenty nineteen here today in middle of twenty twenty five. And we are hopefully starting from this new baseline. Also for perspective and just for the media in the room and probably for the elected officials, this is just illustrative. This is an example of a tax bill and I don't know where we can move the text maybe to the very top. That's helpful. But if you think about. That's helpful. Um, but if you think about the twenty twenty-five approved budget that we're living in right now and the total amount of levy that's approved, um, across the budget, you are collecting one hundred eleven million, six hundred forty-five thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars. And that gets applied across all of the piece of the property tax pie, commercial, apartment, multifamily, residential, um, strict, single-family residential, farmland, we have a little bit of that, um, et cetera. Then you apply the rates, you come up with, that's, this is how you're coming up with that prior chart that has the line bouncing around fifty percent, um, of the, um, estimated tax rate, which gets applied to each class of property. So this residential property, um, the median home, home price in twen- in twenty twenty-five is two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. If they go up, the average assessed value increase could be more, could be less. Then their new assessed value is three hundred and four thousand change. They lose some of their homestead, um, um, credit, right? So that's going to start impacting how much they pay in taxes. And, um, now you have this new median home value and median home value, it has gone up to two thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars. So you could see the first thing that happens is when your market value changes and your homestead, um, calculation reduces, that's, that's the first driver of what your property tax bill is going to be. It's not the actual amount that we're collecting. They then apply that to our, our, let's say, forty-nine point eight-four percent in twenty twenty-six. If there was a six percent increase in the levy amount, just the total dollars collected year over year. And that is what's going to drive your property tax bill. So the same house, let's say that we were coming in at twelve percent, again, just illustrative, just information. Because that same change happens in the median home value, the homestead, um, market value calculation, and then applying the rate of the one percent, they're still going up that same amount of median home value. And then you see the difference between fourteen, one thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. It's an eighty-dollar difference when you're talking about the amount of levy that this house is absorbing. So I just think for perspective, it doesn't go up like, it's not six percent of your whole home value that you're paying. There's just a number of different calculations that need to happen that spread that property tax out outside of a strict percentage across any class of, um, property. Another thing to note that we know that there has been a shift, um, probably grateful for the residential community, not so grateful for the commu- commercial property community, um, where commercials, um, estimated, um, market values in their assessments went up fairly significantly, at least on average, um, across the community. And so that also absorbs any, um, initial property tax, even if you didn't change at all from twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six, the amount of tax you're collecting, which is what this shows, it's absorbing your tax levy, uh, across the system. So the first absorber will be growth in market value. Well, first is growth in construction value. So the first absorption of any levy is going to be this construction increased value. This is an estimate of one point seven percent of the total market value growth is new construction that's never been paying, paying property tax at that level. So I just think it's important to, the percentage is important, but it's really driven by if you're funding the needs of the community, this is the amount of levy that would be necessary in order to do that. And then all the math happens and all of the, um, discrete math occurs. So just want to put that out there. We do start our process early. We try to think ahead and give time to make changes. But that also subjects us to assumptions that maybe are not what becomes reality by the end of the year. And I also wanted to touch on this very briefly, even though you probably don't want to touch on it. I just want to make it very clear, my recommended budget includes funding these things. But in all of the work that the departments did to say, how could I optimize my budget? What are things that I could do and think differently about expenses or revenue? These are things that, aside from all of the changes we made, that is helping to really reduce that eleventh percent projection to much, much less. These are things that still seem worthy of you talking about. I would not cut them myself because they do have implications, the types of implications that you're probably concerned about. But that's what it means if you're going to constrain your levy beyond the net, like what is essential to be able to continue to provide the level of service people are expecting or used to. There are trade-offs. It's not just a balancing act. You're actually trading off what is important. And this is only three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars worth. Now, we, we made a lot of those trade-offs during the baseline because we didn't feel like there was going to have major impacts to our ability to provide the level of service, um, that people have. You don't get to really do that every year. So I think we're in a resetting year. Um, and so I just want to make that clear as we go into finalizing, um, bringing forward the operating budget.
Can I ask you a question on this? I'm confused on the, on the, uh, leased space for adaptive rec. Where are we leasing space? We have the fire station and we have property at one twenty-five Live. Where are we renting space?
I couldn't give you the exact buildings because I don't have it at my fingertips, but there are other places where we have been, um, paying to lease space to bring that accessible rec forward. And I think the reason, I mean, this one was hard. I probably could have just said yes to it. But I think it's a valuable conversation to be had, whether, whether and where you would want to have the accessible rec programming. We think we have spaces that accommodate it just within, um, the walls of the city and the parks, um, facilities. And so I think it's feasible to do, but there may be people who really like the existing locations where there's some leased space happening. We can also bring you more detail back at a future date.
Well, we have the fire station, the old fire station that they, they were using or are using, I'm assuming.
Correct. They're using that. They're using more spaces than they have, than just the city spaces. We're using some private, or I don't know if they're private or nonprofit, private spaces.
Okay, and, and your first one on there is discontinuing short-term licensing software and inspections. Are you talking that we wouldn't be doing any of those inspections on the Airbnbs? Is that the, the area?
That's a policy question. Do you want to continue to do that? If you do, you really need to have the licensing and you need to pay the cost of inspecting. Otherwise, if you're not doing those things, why would you license it? If you're not doing inspections, what is the purpose of licensing?
And if I heard you correctly, right now, all of this is in the budget. If we want to reduce the budget, these are some ideas you have. And the city council might have.
If you want to reduce it further, and if you have other ideas, we would need to evaluate what the implications of those ideas are.
Thank you.
I don't know what those ideas might be, but like if you don't want the police to do something, we would need to understand the implications of that.
Could you later on let us know what the adaptive rec is, is contracting? And the other one, that's, that's the, the diseased trees on private property. Can you get us the information on that? I mean, are we doing some? Are we doing all? Or we, because I know we had a grant for some places, but.
So this is really like fully on your private property, diseased trees that are threatening public property. So if it's threatening your neighbor, if your neighbor's tree is threatening you, that's a civil matter. If your private property tree, let's say you have an alley behind you and your private property backyard tree is potentially going to fall across the alley and maybe some electric wires, we're worried about that. We could, we will plan to bring back a lot of information about all of these, including whether or not, I mean, the, the budget is constantly evolving. Maybe Sunday is not the day that you would want to make adjustments if you're open to having that conversation. But this is related to other requests in the library budget and how they think they might be able to do that in a way that wouldn't drastically impact service, but would reduce the impact of what the cost of some of the new ideas are. So.
Can you hold a minute? I think Councilmember Fredericks has a question regarding the library issue.
Yep. Thanks for your presentation today, Administrators Elms. Just want to go over this quick. In regards to Sunday hours at the library, I looked at the hours in comparison cities libraries and none offer as many weekend hours as Rochester. Mankato, St. Cloud and Fargo are all closed on Sunday. Duluth is closed on Sunday and during the summer is closed on Saturday as well. Sioux Falls and Cedar Rapids are open four hours on Sunday. La Crosse is open four hours on Saturday and Sunday. The library provides valuable services to Rochester. According to the audit report we had earlier, the library sprint, spent nearly ten million in twenty twenty-four. We need to be looking at relief for taxpayers and if we can find some savings that would make sense, we should do it.
So we, we're planning to bring you all the detail back. I just mostly wanted to clarify, I'm not, I'm not building a budget that does not include these things. I'm in, building a budget that does include still funding these things. And I still think it's important for us to have the conversation, the policy level conversation about whether or not, um, the budget, these specific items especially are, are, if you're open to changes and how we're providing those services.
So when would we have that discussion if not today?
You will have that discussion when the budget is complete, which you get the recommended budget for your August study session.
Okay, uh, we do have.
The budget book done yet.
We do have Councilmember Miller, uh, in the queue, and I also have a question. So Councilmember Miller, go ahead.
Yeah, hopefully just a quick question because I continue to get questions about the Fourth of July, uh, music. Is there an alternate city facility? I mean, Kenfield Amphitheater doesn't require any setup. Is, I, I'm just curious, what's driving the majority of this cost that could be saved?
The majority of the costs, so this isn't that we are not doing fireworks.
Yep.
This would be, this would be all, the all-day-long fest part. And so you could still do music. You would probably partner with a radio station, maybe have, it would be like up, leading up to briefly the fireworks while people are gathering. And then during the fireworks display, there would be some music, like what you would see at a fireworks display related to the fireworks going off. So maybe it would be the community band plus a radio station doing the MC or something. But this wouldn't be all of the all-day-long part of it. That's really not, I don't know how related it is to fireworks. It's the fest. It puts the fest in the fourth, I guess, versus the Fourth of July fireworks.
And my question is really, I, I, I know we have great facilities at Cascade Lake. People have asked about fireworks over a lake, being able to have better viewing distances. I just wonder about like how much we could save and still provide a good experience for that festival around the Fourth of July by utilizing facilities that don't require setup and tear down like a festival.
If you were, still don't think you would have the all-day festival if you were having it at a different location? Because you, you need to bring in porta-potties, you have to have security, like these things are not like, there's a little bit that's entertainment cost in here. I mean, you have to pay someone to be the entertainment. Unless you're changing it significantly, it's a day that is on a holiday. People are getting overtime holiday pay, which is double time, all of those things. So, I, I mean, you could look at having it at a different facility and changing it. I don't know that you would save anything, um, by moving it to a, I mean, you'd shift your costs around probably to how you were spending it.
So the setup and tear down, temporary stage, all the tents.
You could save some of that, but it's difficult to produce what we're doing now with this dollar amount.
So just to clarify, these budget opti- optimization options, so with the aligning the Fourth of July fireworks with another event or just doing the fireworks, this option of saving roughly twenty thousand, that is for us to come back and say, if we're looking to pay the two items off of the budget. So currently, what you're working with is the fourth fest, the entire blown-out program?
Yes, but it's still challenging to, to do that effectively, even at the level of budget that we have, that we're recommending with the small team that put, pulls that off. And sometimes we have rain. Um, so those types of things. The daytime part is the part that's challenging to pull off.
I, I have one more question since I, I have the phone. Daytime? Oh, go ahead.
I ju- I just looked it up. It looks like it's only like from five PM to, uh, ten thirty PM, the fourth.
Right, there's five P, the daytime part, I mean, you have to set it all up. It's to actually pull that off, you set it up the day before, you get it ready, you're bringing everything and then you open for, wait, far, far before the fireworks and you have to have entertainment. You need to have the porta-potties, you need to have security, all of those things for all of it. And so that's what I mean, the non-fireworks-specific things.
So you're talking about four, like, I mean, in, in the middle of the summer, it's five o'clock till roughly nine thirty, ten o'clock before the fireworks starts, so.
Because it's not dark yet.
Is this a fireworks question? Go ahead.
It is a future-looking fireworks question. Does any of this consideration change once the transit, West Transit Village's operational, um, you know, parking facility, transit facility? Does that provide additional bathrooms in addition to the ones already at the park? I mean, does some of the setup become already built into the infrastructure there?
To a degree, but you probably need to have porta-potties and hand-washing stations if there's any food, even if people are bringing it themselves. I mean, I think the Health Department would tell us we need to have more than just that.
And I guess just a comment, it, it feels like there, there are great facilities at Cascade Lake that, at least with Kenfield Amphitheater, get used for a forward concert annually.
Yes, we can absolutely look at that. It just, it's unlikely to significantly reduce or alter your costs.
Is yours fireworks-related? Go ahead.
Well, we used to do fireworks at Silver Lake. When we did North Broadway, we moved it to Soldiers Field. The reason we use Soldiers Field is there's parking all around. Where Cascade, there's very little parking for people to come and watch the fireworks and just, and then when they're over, leave. So it's always been a headache for the police department after the fireworks leaves. So that's the reason Cascade Lake does work. Yes, we have a shelter. Why we built it, nobody knows. But we have one at Cascade because, you know, I'm sure people from Southwest wanted one, so we got one. But, you know, we, it's, at Soldiers Field, it, you can park in a lot of different spots, watch the fireworks and, and, and leave, so.
Isn't there a major ramp going in, in the West Transit Village?
But that's far from Cascade.
Is it? Okay. Uh, Councilmember Doring.
This is simply a process question. Why are we debating this right now?
Uh, because I put a slide in to tell you that this is included in my recommendations to fund this and for you to have this conversation when we have the total budget in front of you.
Okay, so it would, to me, it would seem like it would be more, uh, more prudent for us to have that conversation when that total budget is in front of us. So I'm just.
I would make sure you have that and you are welcome to continue having this conversation as it is your meeting.
Thank you for that, uh, Councilmember Doring. I am going to ask one more fireworks-related question since we are digging very deeply into it. So if we did go with just the fireworks, kind of dusked, we can have patriotic music, correct?
Correct. What you would most likely do, as happens at many, many fireworks shows, is that you reach out to your media partners and ask whether they would be willing to host the event, play music, and perhaps you would utilize the community band. Again, there are all sorts of ways that you can do this. And the question really is about whether you think that we should spend time discussing this to have a small savings in your budget, or if you're comfortable with how it is. Recognizing the staff is still going to be evaluating how things change over time and perhaps suggesting that there would be different locations for thing as the, this, as, as the contin- the continued growth of the community happens.
Okay, with.
We're always looking at all of those things all of the time.
With Councilmember Doring pulling us out of the weeds on this, is there any other questions on any other item on, uh, these potential budget optimization projects? All right, move.
I am going to ask Deputy Administrator Parrish to come up.
Good afternoon. Uh, at the risk of pulling you back to that previous conversation, our friend Ben Bolt has said that the rental for the, uh, adaptive rec program was for an activity center with Hiawatha Homes associated with the summer programming. And there's some limited contracted services that occur, um, with third-party providers. That would just be slightly reduced in scope, but it's primarily the Hiawatha, Hiawatha Homes rental for that. Um, CIP, uh, so this is always a, a great opportunity for us to think about what our capital investment looks like. We do it on a six-year basis, um, but we really prioritize and focus on the two years. So you're appropriating within the twenty-six and twenty-seven, uh, period here. From a process perspective, we're going to give you a high-level overview tonight. We'll get you a book, um, that specifically itemizes all of the projects and potentially have you consider that, uh, for approval, uh, in September when you set your preliminary levy. But again, this walks sort of parallel and concurrent with the operating budget. So when we look at twenty-six to thirty-one overall, uh, we have two hundred and ten projects that are included over twenty-five categories. Many of those categories are essentially the same categories you saw in the audit. Wastewater, stormwater, you know, and so on. Overall, that represents five hundred and sixty, uh, point four million dollars of total investment. And as you'll note, in the later years, um, those numbers do get smaller. So we tend to focus on the first few years and then the residual years are more planning-focused. I'd also want to just emphasize for you that this will look different as we move along in the planning process. So a couple of things this is not or does not reflect. It does not have any of RPU's information in here. It has not the most current, um, and evolved version of the DMC recommendations that you normally see on a different timeframe as you walk through that process with the DMCC Corporation Board. So you will see that later in September at the DMCC Board and then into October, um, for city council approval. So just, uh, just note that, that those two things are not reflected, uh, within this. Um, and then specifically in twenty-six, as we zero in on that particular year, you have a hundred and twenty-seven projects, again, twenty-four categories and a hundred and forty-four point nine million dollars in total investment. I would say some of the projects included in here are transformative projects that you've talked about in terms of your evolved strategic priority, and some of these are really asset preservation, just things. asset preservation, just things that we do to invest and maintain the existing assets that we have. A lot of times, uh, my experience is the City Council really wants to understand the levy investment into the CIP. Um, we get a number of sources of revenue into this and we'll go through some of those later. But as you talk about your 110 million dollar 2025 levy, um, you know, about nine million of that is CIP. So what do we do? Um, we're having that 2020 Parks Referendum. That's actually not included in the 9.3. So if you add the Parks Referendum, it will be 11.3, but that was a voter approved. We tend to hold that as a standalone item. For recollection, about $1 million of that is allocated to debt. We accelerated about $14 million worth of projects that you're all familiar with Soldiers' Field, Silver Lake, MLK, some of those projects. Um, and then the other $1 million is appropriated year to year, um, within the CIP. Um, a couple of, you know, two big items that we've talked to you about just in terms of, we have big liabilities and limited resources for funding, streets and facilities. Those are the next two categories that we have here. We put a little over a million into, uh, street rehab resurfacing and, um, that should say preservation. That's a lot of your million overlay. Um, that really does stabilize your streets. Um, but of course, we are, you know, evolving and having more significant reconstruction needs. A lot of different sources of funding go into streets, municipal state aid. Um, we get allocated about 20% of our mileage, um, with funding from the state. You obviously have local option sales tax that was recently approved in this space, um, and, and other sources of funding. But this is a significant investment in the CIP, but again, not significant probably in the context of the liability or obligation. As you saw a couple of weeks ago, facilities reinvestment fund, we are able to allocate about a million dollars, um, for, you know, our significant, uh, facilities portfolio. Uh, you saw numbers previously though, that had that, you know, need much, much higher. Uh, this is a different pivot, but 750 million, uh, 750,000, uh, dollars. So it, you know, drops off rather quickly, um, goes to Willow Creek. Um, that's basically matching our state bonding, uh, funds. So, you know, we don't always know if we're going to be funded, um, with state bonding, but when we do, we have to, you know, finalize the local match within the CIP. This is a portion of that, um, in this particular year in 26. Uh, annual Batumina Street Reconstruction, again, more street reconstruction, uh, happening there. So a smaller, uh, you know, amount, but trying to start to build in that reconstruction space. And then annual ADA Transition Plan, uh, this is the second part of an ADA Transition Investment, um, that's been made and was sort of previously discussed by last year's, uh, City Council, uh, just to accelerate some of our ADA work and, you know, get ahead of, ahead of that.
Uh, Mr. Parrish, could you hold, uh, Councilmember Palmer?
I have two quick questions. Um, the annual, um, street reconstruction. Do you know the dollar amount that sales tax pays for that?
This is strictly the levy portion, uh, supported, uh, portion of that. So, um, definitely more than 700,000. Uh, within the CIP that you will eventually see, you will see how those are allocated to specific projects. Um, but I, I could get you some more information as we move forward.
Because when we did the sales tax presentations, people were worried that we would just lower the dollar amount we would, would use. It'd be nice to say this was the sales tax dollars.
Yeah.
I know the county does signs on their projects to say this was paid for by sales tax. The second quick question, the 750,000 for, um, Willow Creek, that comes out of property tax?
Yeah, that is the local match for the property tax. Yes.
I was unaware of that. Thank you.
Um, and that's the second installment. We had previously allocated some on a prior year as well. Moving on, so some of the specific projects, um, and, and actually, if you look at these, these are just the portion of funding that's allocated within this specific year. As you'll note, these are much larger projects. So the runway project with the airport is a 57 million dollar project. The liquids and solids upgraded, you know, we're, you know, budgeting 14 million this year, but it's a 90 million dollar project. Rapid Transit, 7 million, but it's 170 or 75 million dollar project, uh, and evolving as you'll, you know, start to hear more about. Um, and then we have a couple of, you know, more traditional, um, transportation projects to, to round out the top two. I'll go through those briefly. But again, if you just look at this list, this top five list, you know, you're probably upwards of 350 million dollars worth of total projects, um, that we are investing in the community. If you, you know, take them, uh, not just this year, but in their total project cost. So again, I'm not going to go through these in depth. I think some of these are well discussed. You've seen some of these on your bus tour. You've heard about them before. Um, we're definitely doing the, you know, runway upgrades at the airport. Um, this is 56.4 million. There's been much more work also out there. There were significant category two lighting upgrades and all kinds of other investments that have also been made there. Um, so you're, I think generally familiar with the airport. Uh, we also have a project within the CIP that talks about the parking, um, and the resurfacing of the lot and hopefully, you know, that could potentially be a bonding project as well. But if not, at some point, we have to re-scope that and move ahead with the parking lot work there. Uh, again, you're all very familiar with the WRP, you know, liquids and bio, biosolids upgrade. This really gets us ahead of our permit requirements, um, and, you know, helps us to most efficiently process the significant amount of wastewater that we, you know, generate year over year. Uh, Bus Rapid Transit, again, you're all very familiar with the Bus Rapid Transit Project, uh, with an overall budget of 175 million. So a small portion of the CIP funding within the DMC 2026, uh, for Transit Aid is allocated, uh, within that. Um, you can see sort of the evolution of the bidding, uh, that's happening here and architectural packages are being evaluated. Uh, and again, the Center Street, uh, project, you know, looking at moving along with that and the roundabout overall 6.7 million dollars, requesting 5.7 million of, uh, CIP funding in 26. So that would be bid in, uh, in 26 and same with 18th Avenue. Uh, this one is just really pending the federal funding, um, element, which is traditionally allocated through ROCOG. So that feels pretty stable, but you know, we will continue to monitor, you know, whether we're ultimately successful in getting that federal funding, um, to move forward with that 14.4 million dollar project. And I see Dylan is luckily here. If you have any questions on any of those. Um, so overall, um, this is really just the, um, sources of funds. So I think this is an interesting thing for the council to look at. You start to think about like, where are we allocating money within this 144 million dollars? And you can see, you know, significant federal funding at 40.5 million. Um, you have state DMC funds, you know, at about 15 million or even 20 million, if you include the lo- the local quarter cent sales tax, uh, for that. And then tax levy at 9.3, as we discussed, we do allocate a small or a portion of our local government aid, um, in the past, instead of taking the slight increase we resaw, generally it's a declining enterprise for us, but we did have a slight bump last year. We did put that into capital, um, because we didn't really know or understand if that would be sustainable long term. And I think that's a good move because, you know, that, there's just a lot of volatility in that space. Um, and then retained earnings and project reserves generally are, are funds that have been previously allocated for projects in prior years that are now carrying forward, or if it's an enterprise fund, it's in essence coming out of the enterprise fund, fund balance. And then where are we spending the money?
Councilmember Wall.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. On the revenues, I think I remember asking this last year too. Uh, the totals go down precipitously in the future. That's just because we haven't identified all those funds that will be available in 2030 and 2031.
Yeah, that is correct. So if you look at like, uh, I'll use the federal funding as an example. We have 40 million there and it goes down, you know, quite a bit as the years go along. We may, as we, you know, go for state and federal funding, have a better sense of what those are, and then we will program those in the outer years. Absolutely. Other questions here?
I, I have a question on how a project lands on, uh, on our list. I notice, uh, some of our priorities that we had at the legislature, like the sewer infrastructure upgrades and, uh, is not on there, Sixth Street Bridge. How, how do, uh, projects land on this six year CIP?
Yeah, that's a Council President Schubert, that's a great question. And so, um, some regards, some of those may have been appropriated in prior years. So, you know, Sixth Street Bridge, for example, you know, we previously appropriated in that space, realizing the federal funding. So it's just not being reflected here per se. Um, but in the example of the East Umbro Sewer, the Zumbro Sewer work that we're asking for, uh, funding for at the legislature, we have not included that in that because it would be, the scope of that project would be highly dependent on whether we were able to leverage state or federal funding. So if we're lucky enough to advance that project, we would come back and have a conversation and say, you know, how are we able to fund this locally? It's a little bit of a different discussion because it is within the sewer fund. There is some ability to access retained earnings there within the sewer fund balance, but it would be a conversation with the council.
So you're saying it has to generally have to gain traction either from a state level, federal level, or maybe private sector, uh, funding before we start putting our, our, uh, putting it on our CIP? Is that?
I think that's absolutely correct. And the only thing we do when we adopt the resolution is we acknowledge that we will work toward producing the local match, you know, if, then I think that's why it's important for you all to understand that when we're advocating for the projects or grants. You know, we typically are making a commitment that if awarded, we would fund the local share of that. So.
Uh, Councilmember Palmer.
And, and so over the weekend, I looked at the CIP budget and looked at it and it's 400 pages, which is fun reading. Um, but project 6685 is out of the stormwater and that's 12th Street and Third Avenue flood control. How does that fit into what we're doing with Broadway and, and, uh, 12th Street?
Councilmember Palmer, that's a fantastic question that I do not have the answer to off the top of my head, but perhaps Dylan, uh, or Aaron Lux signs here as well, they could maybe answer that for you.
Good afternoon, President, members of the council. I can take the first shot at this and, uh, that's obviously a project that comes out of our stormwater team, which is the Environmental Services Group that Aaron leads. But, uh, really that's a localized, ongoing localized flooding area that has always been identified by the stormwater team as, you know, there's a need there. And so they've been planning for that project. So it's ma- mainly it's really unrelated to, to the work that we're doing with MINDOT at the intersection of Broadway and 14. It's, it's separate. Um, it's just near that project.
Okay. And, and then, um, project 2577 is coming out of the parking and that's for bicycle parking and that's $60,000. Do we have an idea what we're doing there?
So President of the Council, one, I just want to reference, I think you're looking at last year's CIP and then, you know, of course, we're talking about the next iteration of that here, but that's a great base document, um, to have an awareness of. So if I recall that correctly, and I think others can, you know, certainly add in, I think there was just some desire to evaluate options within the ramp system or downtown for bike, bike facilities. And so it would be $60,000 to enhance bike facilities in the downtown, but.
Is that to physically do it or is that to study to do it?
I thought that was for a project, but.
Thank you for the question. I, I believe that was the cost for a project that was work, an assessment done between, um, the active transportation coordinator and conversation with the Parking and Transit Department where there might be opportunities to add parking in, in ramps, bike racks, et cetera.
So it was a study, so we don't really actually spent money.
No, no, it's not a study. It was an allocation to do an improvement. If we identified an, uh, a parking ramp that could use a bike rack, we would have the dollars to put the bike rack in. So it wasn't a study. It was creating, uh, some funding to be able to do the installation.
And lockers and things like.
Okay. And, and my last one I, I, I'm, I'm looking at is the flood control one and it's, um, project 4889, which is removing sediment from Silver Lake Cascade in the reservoirs. That was the number 11 on that page. Do you, do you figure out where that's coming from?
Mr. Dombrowski, we're going to take the, uh, Mr. Lux.
Yep. Yes, I can take that question. Um, so that is an allocation. We always have to have funds set aside to be able to respond to a storm event should there be a significant amount of sediment that is deposited. So we put that placeholder in so that when we come back to council, you know, to do a project, the funds are there and allocated and ready to go.
Okay. Thank you.
And it gives us the flexibility to go to different locations based on a storm event.
Because number 12, and, and this is the Silver Lake one, is, is, um, flood control money, state funds at 11 million dollars and then 5 million dollars of bonding, um, um, for Silver Lake improvements at the lake is, when is that coming to us or what would, I know we have a presentation coming, but you're talking finances of 5 million dollars for bonding. How does that work into this whole system?
I don't remember all the details off the top of my head. Um, Councilmember, I'll have to look into that one. I believe that was for the full project scope. Sorry, go ahead.
Council President, because that would have been adopted, um, like three years ago, that CIP that you're looking at, um, because we don't make any significant changes in the supplemental year. I think that was when we were in front of the state legislature, looking at a much larger Silver Lake plan that included some park improvements and other things. You might recall the 2023 legislative session, I believe, is when we were doing that. Um, and then maybe it was 2022. So I think it's based on that intent, which then has, did not move forward. And now we have the, um, uh, pending DNR grant for the smaller, um, Silver Lake, um, dam only and dam and dredging project. So the project scope has changed significantly from the document that you're looking at.
Thank you.
Carry on.
And, uh, just, yeah, moving on, this is, these are the investment areas that match out. And, and again, I, I won't go through those. We've kind of highlighted some of the core projects, but you can see some of the key, key investment areas, um, that you have for consideration. And that's pretty much it, unless there's questions on this slide. Otherwise, we can transition it back to Administrator's zones to talk about outside agencies.
Any other CIP related questions? Councilmember Doring.
Just when the CIP comes to us for final approval, uh, what is actually included in that document? I did not review the old CIP, uh, yet to the level as my colleague, uh, Mr. Palmer here or Council Member Palmer. Uh, I guess the request I'm going to make is in that CIP, if you could put, uh, what the bill to the city taxpayer is, what, what other sources of funding are, and then total project cost. Is that what's contained in this CIP?
Yes. And there's a, there, yeah, it's a, I don't know, was it a thousand pages? It's 400. Yeah. I mean, it was, it's not insignificant. And we do a little profile of each project. So you understand what you're investing in. And then we, uh, have a coding system that tells you every dollar and what it attaches to.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right, let's move on to outside agencies.
And I guess this also provides an opportunity to say, there's a reason you don't have all of the detailed budget information yet. It takes the work of a team of a very small but mighty team of Rachel Hodak and Josh Duer and a couple of other us giving them a little bit of trouble, um, making changes to our decisions in the midst of their pulling it together, um, to be able to line up all of those dollars and every line item. Um, so thanks for all they do to do that. And a tiny part of that is outside agencies. Um, we did have an outside agency oversight committee meeting earlier today. So some of you are just going to have the pleasure of seeing versions of this again. But, um, the outside agencies, just to provide some context, um, we have service agreements and the first one, 125 Live, we actually have a, a specific contractual, um, arrangement with 125 Live. Um, the rest of these, we have service agreements that state what, um, prop services will be provided, um, because there is public funding going to them to meet the public, um, purpose doctrine of the state of Minnesota. Um, so 125 Live, obviously, um, probably some of you are members or have visited, is in a city owned building, but operated by a 501(c). Um, the History Center, um, again, not, it's not, Olmsted County does not own it. It is a 501(c). And so these are things that we provide, um, resources to, and they, um, serve a function that otherwise the city might be doing. Um, but they're doing that, um, and carrying a, a lot of the cost. You could think of this similar to, um, the Civic Center. We used to operate the Civic Center. We've changed our agreement. So there is someone else operating the Civic Center on our behalf, but we have an agreement for how that will occur. Um, outside agencies, um, you can see here, you've seen this slide before, and so you may not need to focus too much, but I just want to outline the far left column with numbers in it. This is the, what was requested by each entity. So we go through, um, all of that. Um, the recommendations column with, that has some green in it is what I'm, what, what I have reflected in the recommended, um, budget that I'm working on. Um, and the column to the far right is, still doesn't match the column to the far left. But if you wanted to further increase beyond what I'm recommending, um, I probably wouldn't still recommend that you increase it more than even that. But, um, you can see that what I'm recommending in the 2026 year is overall about a 5% adjustment. And just like the rest of all of the operating budgets of the city, we don't just go across and give everybody 5%. Like we look at what the needs are for each operation. What are people proposing? Is that something that rises to the top relative to all the other services we provide? It's quite a process to actually pull together the total budget and it is a mini process to pull together this recommendation. Um, so you can see, so the first one, one. Um, so you can see, so the first one, 125 Live, that those recommendations are really directly driven by the way that our contract works with them. Um, and so if you look at the notes section, um, Community Building Fund, we're not recommending that we increase that. It's been fairly successful program. We operate that as a city.
Uh, can you hold, uh, Councilmember Miller?
Sorry, a question about that. With the success of it, can you talk about how long in each year that, that fund is available traditionally? Like how quickly does it run out in a given year?
It's, we've actually not had it run out, but we've only been doing it for last year. So, um, it's fairly new. This was something that we created. There used to be a different title here and a different purpose. Um, the Diversity Council used to receive funding from the city and the Diversity Council actually used to do some of the, um, mini grants a little bit different than what, what we've been doing. Um, and I just would say there is one slight thing different here on the right-hand side of that. If there was a desire to invest more funding here, um, it is not recommended that it be for the large grants, the things that we've been seeing, um, it's a little, they've been harder to justify. And so we think there's actually more impact since the one that I think was fairly successful. But like as we've, I've seen other things come in, it starts to, um, feel a little bit less like the purpose of the grant program overall is being met. And then, um, again, the History Center, maybe, I don't know if I should share this on this slide or the next slide, but the 2027 recommendation is about a 3% increase. You saw the audit, the amount going to outside agencies over time has typically not significantly changed every year. Um, we did have adjustments during, um, the pandemic, just like the rest of the budget. But I try not to look at these as entitlements. These are like, it's supposed to be funding that, but for being able to provide some, some support, we might be absorbing the entire budget of the entity and operating an art center or operating a theater or not having those things happen in our community. So this is really context for you. Did not seem prudent to propose a 25% or a 21% increase. I, if I did that across the entire budget, I don't think I would be standing here next year. So you can see here sort of some of the rationale for the recommendations. Um, we receive, um, input from each of the organizations and they provide context for how they would utilize the funding. I will say, um, sometimes it's like I need additional support in order to, to be what I am and that's sometimes less compelling than, um, being able to say, for example, with historical funding, they did a very specific request. It's the cost of busing for an entire class of third or sixth graders to come to the History Center and to hopefully get more membership and more visits outside of school hours as well.
Councilmember Miller.
I have a question about the RDA, um, the pilot marketing campaign that's mentioned that could be added. Is there a way that we, should that pilot go into effect, could measure the impact? Do we get enough detail from sales tax, lodging tax that we could say, here's kind of our stable base, here's what we see from a marketing campaign? And how do we measure the outcome of that investment?
Um, Councilmember, Council President, Councilmember, I, it depends. We wouldn't be operating it, so we would, you'd have to structure what your expectations were for that funding. I'm not recommending that you do that within the budget. I'm certain, I definitely wouldn't recommend that this would increase their baseline. So if it's one-time funding, I would suggest there are other ways to do that outside of allocating new budget dollars to it. Um, but it really depends on what the marketing campaign is. If it's market, if it's just like wide area marketing, like people don't know why they're showing up at your store unless it's like attached to something that they bring in. Um, you could get some of the data, but it depends on what the very specific purpose of the marketing is and how it's actually conducted.
Like, I guess my question is broader. If, if we do anything, I mean, I, I've seen certain cities are, are studying pre and post sidewalk improvements in a, in a commercial district, looking at sales tax data before and after and attributing change or an outcome to compare to the cost of investment. I, I've just, I guess.
Some of the challenges we have in Minnesota is that we do not get very deep dive information from sales tax data. I had the pleasure of working in a state where we actually collected all the sales tax ourselves and we had a lot of great data. But we, I've struggled to ever get like really any, anytime recent. There's like a look back, but it's quite far back when you get actual industry data and it's pretty high level in Minnesota.
Okay, thank you. That, that was really my question and perhaps there's an opportunity that we can work with the legislature to think about that because it is good data.
It's really valuable data to try to understand where, what's shifting in your marketplace. We get, again, we get high level data. For example, there's the city that I worked for that really saw great and increases in activity and people investing in their homes and we could see it directly in some of the data that was coming for, um, what was happening at like the Home Depots and Lowe's of the world. So.
Councilmember Palmer.
Kind of piggybacking what Mr. Miller's asking, we're doing something similar to that for the historic district, aren't we at this time? Are we doing a study to?
Similar but different. So we're doing, uh, maybe Mr. Dainhauser could describe the historic district, mend.
More of a visioning.
Yeah, it's more of a, or sorry.
Actually, I would refer to Community Development Director.
Sorry, I wasn't sure where we ended up with that.
Um, yes, there is a public realm plan that we're kind of identifying in the process of right now of getting some engagement and that's going to be more of what does that historic district look like and identify potential projects moving forward.
Okay. And I'm going to ask a follow-up with Mr., with Mr. Doring, um, question here. Do you want us to talk about this today or are we waiting until September when you bring the budget to us?
I'm happy for you to talk about this today. This is what I'm recommend, this is the specific numbers I'm going to bring to you and recommend in your budget.
Okay.
Unless you tell me something different.
Second, third question is Community Building Fund. To me, that's a confusing thing. It sounds like we're billing something instead of events. It, it, why did we come up with that name?
Um, well, I, I mean, I'm going to guess, but the, the intent is that the grants that are being provided are building community within, um, our, our community. They're not all events that are funded. Some of them are, some of them are events, but some of them, for example, was related to, um, a, a recent one was an agricultural, um, getting more locally sourced agricultural food products to different parks where people could access low, no cost fresh foods and vegetables. I guess you could consider that an event, but it's to try to make sure that the community has small supports to be able to be more connected.
I have a question on that. So, so the Community Building Fund, thank you, Mr. Palmer, because I didn't realize that that was, how is that different from the Our Neighbors Grants or are they the same or similar?
They're different. So the Community Building Fund, you can find that on our website. I can send you the link. We also had a report that went to the city council. I don't remember if it was in 2025 or 2024, um, that showed, um, some of the results that we've been seeing based on the funding that's been provided. That might actually be on that section of the website. I can send that directly to you. These are, go from $500 up to a cap of $5,000. And these are directly requested of the city and then go through a city vetting process to see if they align with the strategic priorities, et cetera. Uh, make sure that we think that it will impact a result and then there's a reporting required for that. The Our Neighbors Grants are very specific and they work with the neighborhood associations. So the intent of the Community Building Fund is you may not have a right, a established group that would go forth and already be connected to go and try to get a grant for their neighborhood association. Um, so they're diff, they have different purposes, they're administered differently.
Okay, we have, uh, Councilmember Miller, then Councilmember Wall.
And so my question is related, uh, because there are different programs, because the, the park board also sets out and granted, this is outside of our budget, a hundred thousand dollars a year for projects, um, community projects that could happen in the parks. Is there a way to better integrate at least communication to community members? So say something comes into the Community Building Fund, we don't have funding or we could fund it, but it could also potentially apply to the parks. Is there a way to shift those and say we've evaluated it?
Yes, I would say this gets to one of the very large goals that I have as the city administrator, which is try to connect an organization that by charter and well, maybe perception of charter and reality of some parts of charter, um, suggests that all of this is separate, when in fact, anyone going to a park is expecting to have the similar experience, positive experience they have if they go to a library, if they go to a bus stop, if they go anywhere. Um, and so there is a way for us to do that and it is continuing to pull together as an organization and continue our strategy of having more centralized or shared services in, out external communication of what is available so that it's not just someone receives a parks press release, a city press release, uh, um, so that all goes, it's challenging because people have been used to doing the separate way. And it is an adaptive challenge that is, has to acknowledge the grief and loss that comes with not being able to put your own press release out. Um, so yes, there is, and it's part of a much broader, all the way across the organization goal, organizational goal, but, um, point well taken.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Wall.
I support the elimination of, uh, uh, funds for southeastern, or south, Southern Minnesota Initiative Fund of $15,000 because our few dollars are just a drop in that huge bucket they have. Does that, uh, will that play into any funding decisions that they make for Rochester in terms of projects?
I would suggest that it should not. I did meet with, um, one of their, their newer, um, I can't remember the title, but, um, in, they're in the space of, you know, donor relations, et cetera. Um, and so I, I shared that we were looking at this. We'd had some reductions in the past, but again, I, their mission and the mission of each of the programs that either passed funding through for or that they are awarded from the state to achieve something doesn't really change. So I would think that with the integrity of how they've operated for the past decades that they would continue to, um, look at that and regardless of the amount of funding a city would provide or not provide, that they would be looking at to try to still achieve their goals and the impact of the funds that they are circulating.
That seems reasonable.
I would follow, I would follow up on that one. That was Mr. Penny's, um, I believe was the executive director and I believe they were pushing hard for reading programs and, and I believe Rochester received a lot of that reading program. So I like that one. I'm going to go back to my community, excuse me, Community Building Fund. Um, we had the, um, gospel music event that we did, um, which, which was, turned out to be good. We just got to report how well it was done. Um, I would like to see us increase that building fund a little bit more, um, and maybe, maybe not do as much with, um, Our Neighbors.
I guess I, I would like to see a clarification on when it comes to Our Neighbors. It, it's a hundred twenty, that's the entire budget, correct, for Our Neighbors?
Um, it is, we are the vast majority of it. It's not the entire budget, but we're, we're like 95% of the.
I guess my, my question would be how much of that, how much in, in, uh, neighborhood grants do we, do we provide? And I guess I, I, I would be open to if it, if it means bringing them together. Uh, but I, I think neighborhood grants, those small 500, a thousand to, up to, I think they're $5,000, they really do improve the, the neighborhoods, bring up the property values to those neighborhoods. So I wouldn't want to see those go away.
So if I could just provide some context about Our Neighbors. So Our Neighbors, if you can see on the right-hand side of the slide, this would, they had some challenges during the pandemic and they were not able to successfully close a grant, et cetera. So they had, had been carrying a fund balance. That changed, um, for a variety of different reasons. And so they've been readdressing their strategic priorities and model. We had adjusted downward based on what they had been spending their budget. This recommendation brings them back to approximately their 2020 funding level by 2027, but it also means they are a separate entity. So they, as their board, once you are providing these funds, needs to be managing the budget in accordance with what their budget is, especially if the majority of it is city funding. So I would just also say if we were going to provide this type of neighborhood support to the organized neighborhood groups or encourage others to organize, it is highly unlikely you would have a full, well, you would definitely not have a full-time employee at that rate. Um, just even their salary would be more than that with benefits. So, I mean, it is a partnership that's been going on for quite some time. It operates very much at like an extension of the city of Rochester, but it is a separate board that's looking at how would they allocate? And so if they're hiring additional staff, then that is a decision that they make that maybe means they can't do the grants. And so even if we provide additional funding, if they're making other choices about how, how they need to operate or feel they need to operate their organization. I mean, they, just like every city department, they have to look at what is their priority. And if they don't have enough to do both and hire additional people, then, you know, are you growing beyond what your capacity is or should you look, be looking at other funding sources, those things of that nature?
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Miller.
And just to comment on Our Neighbors, I, I do believe for their grant program, they discontinued it for the current year. So I don't believe there are any grants that are available now. Obviously their board will consider, continue to look at decisions with their, the additional funding in future years perhaps. But what, what I was going to ask for is for the Community Building Fund, is there a way that we could see just a summary report of impact to Councilmember Palmer's point about the Gospel Music Festival, understand how it's being used in the community, what, um, projects are being funded, which ones maybe aren't being funded, either because of a, I don't know, just to get a sense of what that is supporting in the community or what people are putting forward. Uh, I think it would be really helpful to understand how an increase, um, could impact those areas.
Yes, we can work to bring something forward and I can send you what we already have available, which is probably not up to date through like current day.
Councilmember Palmer.
I have a quick question. Our Neighbors Art Center, Civic Theater, all are in city-owned buildings. Do we give a value to that? Or if, let's say that Art Center closed, would we open an Art Center or would we?
We would have a discussion.
Would we sell the building? I mean, what would we?
That's part of the challenge, right? So there's space that has been able to be in large part fundraised. Some other funding sources went to the building to be able to finish it. We now own it and we have an operating agreement for that to be there, but you would, yes, we would have decisions to make about, much like another building that I hesitate to mention, the Chateau, about baking, understanding, is there a clear vision that you can get four votes on that doesn't, that also your, your mayor agrees is like the right thing to do in a period of time? And, and how much funding are you willing to put to operate it? Because the operations of these far exceeds the dollars that the city is providing but for the, Our Neighbors and I mean, community building doesn't really have, it's a part of operating cost of other employees that, that.
But at Civic Theater, we're replacing the roof. They don't pay for any of that. That's our building.
We pay for the roof. If they do things that are directly related to their operation, like they need to get new curtains or something like that, they arguably would need to be paying for that if it's related to a theater operation. But some of those things, we also still share some cost because we need the building to be safe. We need the operation of that to be safe and, uh, we work together, but it is more challenge, uh, it's a challenge and an opportunity to have these partnerships in city-owned facilities. But yes, the asset is ours and if we don't preserve it, whether there's an operator that is operating in the facility or not, you will still own that asset and need to determine what you would do with it. I think there could be complications over there depending on the funding sources that went to funding it and how, um, how the state auditor will look at them in relationship to the state bonding that was used to some, there was some state bonding, um, put into that. So there's requirements on how it operates, um, that I think our obligation goes for 25 years. So there's some challenges when you don't pay for things locally, you have strings.
Thank you.
Councilmember Doring.
Just a couple of quick questions that hopefully can provide a little clarity. Um, when the Civic Theater says this additional money would increase support programming and work in hosting 25 nonprofits and community organizations, what does that actually mean? Uh, when we give, uh, an additional $8,500 to the Art Center would increase support, uh, would it, uh, increase would support operations and increase programming? What does that actually mean? So what kind of increased programming is the Art Center going to put forward because of the additional funding?
This is so that, so there's a voluminous amount of documentation that I felt like was too much to provide.
No, it's.
But if this is the very basic summary on one page of if you look at the Art Center, I would say that that was more related to they're having trouble meeting like costs of salaries, et cetera, and continuing to do a lot of their summer programming, summer camps, et cetera. But it isn't necessarily drastic amount of new programming for that amount, but it helps keep them at a level where if they're bringing in more dollars, they can actually be operating and then looking at what other opportunities they have to, to add. Rochester Civic Theater is unique because this had gone to zero in one year. And so, um, they're still not at the amount that they were at before, but their operating model has completely changed, um, in their, um, recovery from the challenges that they had in 2017, 2018. Um, so if you look at this, it's trying to get them to this point over a period of time. They, um, are also, I believe, looking at potentially increasing a little bit about the cost for, for their space, but they want to keep it still low enough that they can serve as many people as possible. And so this helps them be able to meet budget and growth and, and survive and thrive and not peel back the act. And so this helps them be able to meet budget and growth and, and survive and thrive and not peel back the access to other groups. Because otherwise they likely would need to do more of their own ticketed events in order to make up that revenue. So it's sort of trying to be able to support this model and not just the civic theater, but the other users of that space.
So if I understand what you're saying correctly, it's not for an abundance of new programming. It is to, um, common seat staff to maintain current levels of programming, where often than not.
Current levels of programming and specifically the other groups that are not Rochester Civic Theater specific productions. Utilizing the space, um, in a way that doesn't end up making their budget not work. Because the cost that they're associating with that is maybe not quite cost neutral to, to, to the actual amount of money that they could make if they were actually putting on more of their own productions. So it's actually them sort of holding back on what else they might be able to do within Rochester Civic Theater specific productions, um, in order to keep making space for those other groups. Does that make sense?
Yep. Can I ask one more question real quick since I have the floor? Uh, it looks like we are overfunding 125 Live based on their funding request for, to 2027, right? So I look at this chart and I understand that their request for 2027 funding was $114,610. We're going to fund them, uh, according to these numbers at $116,902.
In 2027, that's.
Correct.
That's an error on here. We just put what their contract said for 2026. So they're a little bit different than the rest of these. Well, they're all different from each other. So that probably should have said $116,902 on the far upper left corner.
Okay. Then that clarifies.
Their contract.
I was just going to ask the justification of overfunding one organization and underfunding another organization. And you just answered that question for me, so I appreciate that.
Apologies for that.
Yeah. Councilmember Palmer.
Yeah, real quick on civic theater, they almost, they, they should have gone bankrupt, they didn't. But last year they said that they had 300 nights that they were using their building. If we gave them more money, then they could support more. And I believe that they wanted to get to 330 nights of using that facility. So that's, that's one of the reasons I would, I would really, um, support that.
Councilmember Palmer, um, councilmember Miller.
Just a quick question, uh, RDA asked for double their budget. Is there a proposal behind that as well? I mean, can we, I think we talked about economic development funding. There was a DMC contracted a property analysis of the downtown in 2019 through Urban 3. I'm just trying to get to like, how do we understand the opportunity for development for other paybacks of this investment versus?
So there have been a lot of changes at RDA and they have been adjusting how they're providing their summer events through more contractors and, um, professional services and trying to maximize the revenue that they also receive off of those events. So they can shift some of their budget to be more focused on marketing, which hadn't been for quite a period of time. So I'm just gonna say this, but when we met with, um, the director, I asked multiple times, is this supposed to be? Did you just accidentally put 125,000 in for two years and? Like you put it on the first year or, and no. Um, but it was, uh, we have a new director that's looking, you know, maybe hasn't gone through this process before and was like, oh, go big. And that's not really what outside agencies is for. I can totally appreciate that. But in reviewing it, it appears that it's sort of trying to do both then. Add more to marketing and like restore to some degree, some of what you're spending on your events. But that's a huge increase and a shift in an organization that maybe needs to also think about what other dollars are they bringing into the organization. Um, so it was to add staffing was a big part of it. And then the other component was, I think about $50,000 for this idea for marketing. But again, they've been shifting their budget for marketing. I think some of that is a concern with what amount of construction is going to happen. Um, but typically, once we add, we don't ever take away. And so it's difficult for me to think about putting that in the budget. And then again, this is a nonprofit organization that has decisions to make as they work through the budget year. I don't think there's a really great way of guaranteeing that four years from now, it's still getting used specifically for marketing.
Sure, and that makes sense. I, I guess the, the biggest question, I know we talked about this with sales tax. It's just hard to say, is this a good investment? Is this not a good investment? What is the potential return? And we don't seem to have a great way to measure that.
Well, and of course, each of these organizations is doing something really different and has a really different community value and, you know, value to the fabric of how, how work and relationships help us move forward in a way where the city doesn't have to do all of it. Um, which sometimes we're not the best people to do it. Sometimes we're the best people to support it in some way or influence it in some way. And so I'll give the example of 125 Live. If you look at their overall budget, um, which I don't have in front of me because my computer's up there, but it's not small. You might be having that entire budget be part of, um, what the city does if you wanted to continue to operate, um, a 125-like, um, service for the community. And perhaps if the city operated it, people would say, and you shouldn't be charging me for it at the door. It shouldn't be a membership, right? So like maybe the budget is double. Um, so, um, I would say for all of these, for all of these, looking at it as what is the impact we're trying to have? Say with the community building fund, it's slightly different than the our neighbors local grants, but similar concept. You can have a small amount of dollars have a really big impact and maybe it just plants the seed. And then the rest of those ideas go forward without additional city funding. History Center, I don't know if you would operate a history center. Um, I've never operated a history center, but I guess there's first time for everything. Their budget is much larger than $47,500, um, to operate and maintain the facility. Um, the Rochester Area Economic Development, Inc. I mean, there are plenty of cities that operate their own, um, economic development funds and do marketing, et cetera. But I, you know, we have an established partnership, um, a lot of, um, folks there, um, they have a much larger budget than this, um, in total. Um, and so, you know, the list goes on.
I have a question. I do have a question on, on the ready. So could we see how much, I know ready, uh, it's Rochester area, so it, it goes, uh, broader than the city of Rochester city limits. Uh, other municipalities, the county, how much do they put into ready? Is it, is it per capita similar to what we put into it?
I can ask for those detailed questions. They don't provide that amount of detail in their financial reports. But I know that, so if it's listed on their website as a ready investor, they're providing something, but it's probably at scale. So we're the largest city in Homestead County and the third largest in the state. So other cities are probably putting in vastly less than that as a, as an investor.
Yep, no, I'd expect that. Councilmember Wall.
And compounding, uh, councilmember Miller's, uh, investment and what do we get back? Of course, it's not always in, in the way of money. Uh, you know, it's quality of life, uh, art center, music, uh, but particularly like the RDA, uh, that Thursday's downtown. I mean, i- if I were a visitor and was healthy enough to be outside and enjoying Thursday and saw this thing happen, uh, I'd think, I think Rochester's a really great place to be. Maybe we'll move here. I, I actually heard that from one person and they did move.
Yeah, I, that's, that's the hard part of it. It's honestly the hard part about the whole budget. Part of why I love it is that it's also painful. Um, I suffer for the budget, um, which me, you know, which I do love the budget, but, um, I have a passion for it and the Latin, you know, etymology of passion is to suffer. Um, so, but it, it's, it really kind of tells the story of like how complicated it is for it, all of these different services at a level that people expect on the day, the one day a year or the 10 days a year, that they either have to use it or get to use it. So it's challenging to pull it all together because on that day that somebody needs it or wants it, they want it to be perfect. And that's like multiple different iterations of 125,000 people plus 3 million visitors every single day, getting it right. And the fact that we don't actually have that many complaints, like we're getting it right, like 99% of the time.
Other questions? Outside agencies? Thank you.
Thank you. I think, look there, we're at policy considerations again. Um, so just something to think about. I know it maybe feels like you're getting sort of the slow drip of a budget, um, but it really takes a lot of time and effort to pull together all of the details that roll up, um, to the entire proposal. And because it becomes focused on so much, I would not want to put an anticipated, like how much the levy might change year over year together until like we've combed through it 10 more times to make sure that we're confident that if we brought this forward, um, that it would, you know, where we wouldn't be coming back and asking for more afterward. So. With that, we do have another item. It's your favorite study session schedule. Um, so forthcoming, we have, um, oh, we started with today. The update, um, on the disposition of city real estate. So a reminder, um, July is normal and then things start getting weird in August. Um, but we did make some changes, um, to the 28th study session. Um, we think that we can fit that in a typical timeframe, but that's four very different topics. So you might want to plan to be here a little bit later, um, than you typically would. I don't think you need to be here till nine, but like seven, maybe. Um, we'll see. We want you to be able to have robust discussion as some of these things came up today. Um, and then, um, we will be moving forward. Um, the city clerk's office will send you updated calendar invites for, um, the changes that you made at your last meeting for the August, um, regular meetings and study session, uh, meetings. And then we have another question slide, just in case you didn't ask all your questions.
Any final questions? Uh, councilmember, uh, Miller.
I guess just still thinking about the outside agencies as we kind of like create benchmarks for our community and what they do. Obviously, the community is still growing and I wonder where we might think about per capita investment and some of the ones that make sense that can, should scale up as our community grows, particularly community building fund, maybe our neighbors. How do we grow those services to accommodate so that it's not just the established ones that are getting funding? At some period of time, thinking of our neighbors, which hasn't really expanded beyond the city core that much. How do we support that service to, um, you know, neighborhoods that are newer?
And then I think the secondary question would be, it's important to like take it all in context, right? And maybe these break out differently. They've adjusted and broken out differently in different parts of the budget as time has moved on. Um, but it's helpful for me to look at them all in one place because they are similar. Um, and I think the question also then becomes, should we still be doing it in that model? Or should it be a different model? Should there maybe be our neighbors, should it be a city department? I mean, there may be, should be something where it's, you know, you're pulling together a coordination where somebody's coordinating and they're pulling in parks or they're pulling in public works or those kinds of things. And, um, that's a harder political conversation to have, um, typically for elected officials and we'll leave it at that.
Yeah, yeah, I totally appreciate that. Just want to make sure that we scale the services, uh, appropriately as our community grows and changes.
All right. Well, thank you and everybody have a wonderful week off next week and we are adjourned.